I hereby call this meeting of the Richmond Public Schools School Board to order.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will read your electronic statement. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom. The link to access the Zoom meeting can be found in the meeting notice. Once logged in, click Interpretation and select Spanish to listen. All meeting participants are encouraged to speak slowly and deliberately to allow for accurate translation. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance 2020-093 and the School Board's resolution approved on April 20, 2020. The notice of the meeting stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and it would be live streamed on the school division's Facebook page and the public could view it there. The link was provided. It also stated that the board would not receive public comment. However, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rvaschools.net and they would be shared with the board. The agenda for the meeting was posted to Board Docs and the link was provided. After the roll call, it will be determined how many board members are participating. Are you ready for roll call, Madam Chair?
Let's have it.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
Ms. Cosby? Mr. Young?
Present.
Dr. Sapini? Mrs. Door?
Here.
Mr. Barlow? Mrs. Gibson? Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
You have a call, Madam Chair.
All right. The adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
That was Ms. Page, is there a second?
Second.
That was Ms. Burke. Any discussion? All right, then let's have the vote.
Okay. I'm sorry, my computer is not cooperating. Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Door?
You're on mute, Ms. Door.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow?
Yeah.
I didn't hear him, did he?
I don't see him.
Okay, that's right, he wasn't. Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes, now, Ms. Cosby and Ms. Gibson have joined us.
Okay. Ms. Cosby, would you like to vote on adopting the agenda as presented, there were no changes? Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Gibson?
Yes, I put a note about one change.
Well, I'm sorry, but we are beyond that now. Maybe later.
Yes, I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Well, we were finishing the vote and the vote is done.
Right, and it can always be amended, so I'll vote to adopt, but then I would like to motion to make an amendment, I suppose.
Okay.
What's your amendment, Ms. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Owen.
I would like to receive a quick update on the status of the childcare. That was something we discussed in our last meeting.
It's in the agenda.
Oh, okay, good, perfect. Which item is it, my apologies?
4.01.
Okay, I didn't understa-- it says, "Receive an update on the facilities use agreement for virtual learning." And so, that is, the language there was just not clear, but I understand now, thank you.
Okay. So, then no amendment. All right, then moving on to approval of the corrected minutes. Is there any motion to approve the minutes as presented? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Ms. Burke has seconded, is there any discussion? Being none.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Ms. Cosby, yeah, there you go.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes. All right, before we go to public information, I would like to share with my colleagues that we have over 100 public comments and therefore I would like to limit each to one minute and our total time to two hours. We have plenty of business to do tonight and so I would like us, since we can all see them on Board Docs, to move through them. I'm hoping that I don't see any discussion. All right, then let us move to public comment.
Okay, let me get my timers together.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and if you need some backup, Ms. Wilson, you be sure and let us know.
I will, thank you, and if you can't hear me, please let me know. You said one minute and for a total of two hours?
Yes.
Okay. Ricardo Birdsong. I am writing this letter seeking support to rename a Richmond, Virginia public school in honor of fellow Alfred Street Baptist Church member Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. Dr. Harrison Jones has devoted her entire adult life to educating our children and she is most deserving of this honor. She began her career as a Woodville School Classroom teacher in the Richmond Public Schools and worked her way through the ranks where she was sworn in as the first female superintendent in education in Richmond, Virginia Public Schools and the very first African-American female superintendent of schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia on June 26, 1985. A true pioneer and trailblazer, she also became the first African-American female superintendent of schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts when she became the superintendent of Boston Public Schools. In addition to these very-- Barbara Fields. It is my distinct honor to submit a letter in support of the naming of a facility in the Richmond Public Schools in recognition of the exceptional contributions of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. I first met Dr. Harrison Jones when she was appointed superintendent of the Boston Public Schools. She was the first African-American female to hold the position in Boston and in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. She was selected to serve at the conclusion of the tenure of Boston's first black superintendent. In fact, the Boston African-American community was very proud, was very pleasantly surprised that the Boston School Committee would appoint-- I'm sorry.
That was correct.
No, my other timer is messing up, now I'm trying to get back on track. Thank you. She was-- and I-- too many timers going on. Okay, let's see. Vanetta Jones. I am writing to the Richmond Public School Board in support of naming a building in the Richmond Public Schools after Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. Dr. Harrison Jones, whose extensive service and visionary leadership in the Richmond Public Schools as well as nationally and internationally, is ranked among the top public school educators of all time. I first met Dr. Harrison Jones when as dean of the School of Education at Howard University. I was searching for faculty to lead the doctoral program in urban education leadership that we were establishing at Howard. I knew of Dr. Harrison Jones's stellar reputation and had had as a top priority for our new program to convince her to join our faculty and provide leadership for the doctoral program. Hiring Dr. Harrison Jones was among my best decisions as dean. Her leadership of the program and eventually the department were beyond what could have been fathomed. She brought-- Rosie Sorrels. I am pleased to write this letter in support for naming a Richmond Public School facility in honor of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones Fears. My colleagues, fellow educators, as well as elected officials have discussed this recommendation and agree that Dr. Lois Harrison Jones is without a doubt worthy of this honor. I have known Dr. Lois Harrison Jones since the early 1980s. During that time, she was Associate Superintendent of Schools for Dallas Independent School District in Dallas, Texas. At that time, I had the honor and privilege of working under her leadership. I was Director of Early Childhood Education Centers for grades pre-kindergarten through grade three over 125 campuses. In 1993, I retired from Dallas ISD and was later elected to the Texas State Board of Education. Dallas was one of the school districts that I represented. Again, I had the pleasure-- Charmaine Price. It is a pleasure and an honor to provide a letter of support on behalf of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones Fears for the naming of a school facility for a person so worthy of this honor. My association with her is that she served as Associate Superintendent of Dallas Public Schools during that time, during the time that I served as Principal of Harold Budd Elementary School. This school served a multicultural neighborhood with levels of kindergarten through sixth grade six. She was always available and helpful in all areas of school operation, including staff development. I am enclosing a page with major accomplishments so that you may understand my admiration and support for this talented educator. She is worthy of great consideration by the Richmond School Board. Robert Price. It is with extreme pleasure and honor to support the nomination of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones Fears for the naming of a Richmond Public School facility. In working with Dr. Harrison Jones Fears, I have found her to be dedicated to the education of all youth. Whenever she was called on to support positive programs in education, she never hesitated to provide assistance. For example, I recall in 2003 when the Dallas School District was in federal court dealing with the Sam Tasby School desegregation case, Dr. Harrison Jones Fears testified in support of the plaintiffs and intervened a black coalition to maximize education. Some people were afraid to testify, but Dr. Fears had no fear. There were several other occasions where she provided her knowledge and expertise to provide the best in education for Dallas students. Thank you for your consideration. Joseph Johnson. It gives me pleasure to write this letter in support of renaming a school in honor of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones, former superintendent of Richmond Public Schools. I have known Dr. Harrison Jones for more than five decades and am very familiar with her accomplishments, stellar career, and meaningful contributions to pre-K through 12 and higher education. She spent the majority of her successful career in Richmond Public Schools and is most deserving of your serious consideration. She is not one to boast about her national reputation and accomplishments as a competent, compassionate, student-centered leader, which makes it even more fitting that she be honored for her contributions to Richmond Public Schools and the greater Richmond metropolitan area. Examples of her accomplishments include Woodville Elementary Classroom Teacher, Instructional Leader, Baker School Assistant Principal and Principal, Area Director, School Board Clerk. Valerie Harrison. Please accept this letter as my enthusiastic support for the renaming of a Richmond, Virginia Public School in honor of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. While I am certain that you will receive many letters of support recounting Dr. Harris Jones's impressive record of service to the children of Virginia and her countless first, Dr. Harrison Jones was the first woman appointed to the position of School Superintendent in the Commonwealth of Virginia in March 1985. Mine is much more personal. Dr. Harrison Jones is my father's baby sister and her life and legacy have been a symbol of pride and progress for our family and for African-Americans in Virginia and throughout the United States. In the late 1970s, as high school graduation lurked in my not-so-distant future, I had to decide on a college. When it came to college selection, my father's logic-- Cheryl Dowling Blackwell. I would like to begin by commending you on your decision to address and correct the regrettable naming of schools in Richmond after individuals who took up arms against their own country in order to maintain the inhumane practice of slavery. I wish to thank you also for affording the wider community the opportunity to recommend for your consideration the names of individuals for whom Richmond should be rightfully proud of their contributions to the furtherance of educational opportunities, a hallmark of freedom, to all citizens regardless of race, religion, creed, or color. It is my great honor to recommend Dr. Lois Harrison Jones, whom I have known all of my life. She and I were in the same grades from primary, now kindergarten, through high school in Westmoreland County, Virginia. She was always known for high academic achievement, the pursuit of excellence, high moral character. William Smith. I am aware of your efforts to make name changes and recommendations for new schools in the city of Richmond. I truly support this endeavor. As a former city administrator and council appointee official, working with you and families, I had the opportunity to work very closely with Dr. Lois Harrison Jones for 30 years. I was present when she took the oath of office as superintendent and witnessed the leadership and institutional change she brought to the school system. I urge you to consider Dr. Lois Harrison Jones, former school superintendent, associate superintendent, principal, and teacher for a school name. Thank you for your consideration. Libby Sins. Hello, I love what RPS has been doing, summer school ruled. Question, our daughter is a vegetarian, but she eat eggs. She's not the only one, is there any way vegetarian meals can be set aside for vegetarians? We don't want to throw away a meat sandwich every day. It would be easy to include a cheese sandwich or a pizza slice or an egg salad or a PBJ or some such. Or dare to dream something cheap and healthy like rice and beans or a veggie wrap. If not, can you post the menu each week so that we can have a sense of whether to show up for meals or not? Many huge thanks for all you do. Michael Lampkin. Dear School Board members, I was reviewing my transcript before I wanted to send it off to colleges and universities and noticed some big irregularities. All of my grades and GPA per year have been nothing below a 3.0. My most recent year GPA is a 4.25 and the previous year GPAs were nothing lower than a 3.5, but somehow my cumulative is a 2.9. I got a call from my school stating that GPAs and class rank are run by the district and that counselors are not supposed to touch GPAs and class rank. I was wondering if this is true because this is negatively impacting all of us as the class of 2021. I was further confused because according to RPS's own School Board Policy Number 5-6.3, I for incompletes are not supposed to be calculated in GPAs. Why did-- Russell Bush. To whom it may concern, this letter is one of recommendation and support for naming one of the Richmond City Public Schools in honor of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones, who served this system in a variety of capacities and contributed much to the development and progress of students and the school system. Over the years, she served the system very effectively in a variety of capacities to include teacher, principal, supervisor, director, and superintendent. Among her many accomplishments and contributions to Richmond City Public Schools and communities, she has the distinction of serving as the first African-American female superintendent of the city schools. Dr. Harrison Jones's effective service and leadership of the city schools opened many doors and provided many opportunities for students, parents, and staff. Daryl Fisher. I am pleased to write this letter in support of the recommendation to rename one of your school district's school buildings in honor of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. Dr. Harrison Jones has demonstrated a lifelong commitment to improving the quality of education in and around the Richmond community and her accomplishments are many. As a classroom teacher, Dr. Harrison Jones has been known to be fair, honest, and approachable. Her reputation as a talented, competent, and compassionate leader speaks well of her dedication and commitment to excellence. It is my belief that on the merit of her outstanding contributions as an educator, administrator, and civic leader, Dr. Lois Harrison Jones is most deserving of this honor. Susan Childress. I am writing, I wanted to write a quick note about our week thus far. I have a sixth, eighth, and 10th grader. All of our teachers have been amazing. I cannot believe how present they are with their kids, but we have had some tears, headaches, and frustrations. It's long, too long. When my sixth grader gets disconnected, she freaks out, so worried she's going to miss something. It took us about 30 minutes to reconnect today. Next week, I go back to work and I'm not sure how this will all play out. The other thing I hadn't processed was how their homework would still be online. So while they've been on the computer for six or seven hours, then they still have a couple of hours of homework after classes end. Any chance we can just have Wednesday as a homework day where they don't have any virtual instruction but are able to complete their online work and then not have any extra homework on days? Sarah Pravonic. I have a middle and high schooler. I am writing to ask that the School Board amend the weekly schedule to be a standard 9:15 to 12:15 online program. The afternoon could be used for their own free work time with reading, math, and writing. The virtual schedule is not developmentally appropriate and cannot be sustainable long term. Thank you. Leah Krevich. I wanted to reach out concerning the full-day virtual learning arrangement. I have a third grader and a kindergartner at Lynnwood-Holton. I appreciate all that has gone into the RPS open with love, approach, planning, and manifestation. Our teachers are absolutely amazing and are doing as much as they possibly can do to make this schedule feasible. As parents, we are trying to support the process as actively as we can. My kids are also trying to give it their best. Ultimately, this full-day structure is just not sustainable. Both of my kids started this year with a lot of enthusiasm and we were all very excited and supportive of the calendar laid out by RPS. However, this is not working. My son refused to go to class today despite loving the teacher and loving the material. He said he was just so tired, there was no way to make it happen. He goes to bed at 8:30. What he is saying-- Hannah Abbey. I have a kindergartner enrolled at RPS. I would like to support any motions to decrease the number of daily hours students are required to complete. Currently, my child is sitting at her laptop from 9:15 to 3:00 p.m. with a couple of breaks and an hour lunch. She reports that she is liking it. She also seems engaged and that is all a credit to her amazing teacher. Shout out to Mrs. Miller, John B. Carey. However, as a mom, I know that my child is going to burn out eventually on this road. She will always do her best, but she will not be able to maintain this level of attention when the shine wears off. Also, I am very concerned with the physical impacts being put on her developmentally. She should be outside running around a lot more and by the end of the day, she's just zapped of all of her energy, eyes glazed. Her eye and muscle development need to be considered. I'm sure you all have seen the studies.
Ms-- I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, can you go back up and you skipped a real short one from Chandra Smith right before Hannah Abbey?
Yeah, thank you. Chandra Smith. As a RPS grandparent, I am concerned by the length of time my third grader is spending in front of the screen.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for letting me know. Liz Collins. I understand the board is collecting feedback from folks around the online school schedule. I have a fifth grader at Holton Elementary. The first week has been nothing short of miraculous. Our teacher, Mrs. Turnage, has been fantastic and patient. Some kinks along the way, but I know we'll work through them. I do think the length of time he's online for meetings is too long. I've been working from home since March and I'm completely fried whenever I have days with six hours of online meetings. I'm an adult, I can't imagine this is good for children. I'm already seeing signs of irritability, anxiety, and stress in my son. I'm still in favor of the online learning, I know we can figure this out. This is a huge opportunity to revamp the educational system. Please don't give up. Please consider shortening the online instructional learning time, there must be models. Sarah Blackburn. With acknowledgement of and appreciation for the Herculean effort that has gone into virtual schooling this year, I think it's important to simply say that 9 to 3 is far too long to expect all our children to sit and focus at a computer regardless the number of brain break videos and exercises that are incorporated throughout the day. Speaking for our own family, learning harder on independent work and building more flexibility into the schedule would go a long way toward making full participation possible. Ideally, we'd love to see the full class or live portions of the day concentrated in the mornings with the afternoons focused on optional virtual instruction, independent work, and/or one-on-one time with teachers. Bridget Pryor. As a mother of a RPS student, I would like to voice my support in streamlining the synchronous part of the school schedule. It is nearly impossible to jump on and off Zoom multiple times a day. I really believe the max amount of time the children should be in front of the screen should be until about noon. Instead of doing teaching for one subject, then the kids doing the independent work for that subject and then hopping back on for teaching for another subject. I highly recommend and request that all teacher instruction be lumped together with the kids able-- with the kids able to do their offline work independently in the afternoons. Not only is it better for the kids, but this makes it so much more feasible for working parents. Thank you. Karen Call. I have a kindergartner at Holton Elementary, and though her teacher is amazing and is doing great, my six-year-old daughter just cannot be on a computer all day like this. It is just too long for kids, especially the littles. There is a major lack of focus, therefore, nothing in the afternoon time is soaking in. Couldn't we just do a straight 9:12 with a little break in the middle and give an assignment for two for the afternoon? A required reading math minimum for the student to complete before the next day, something of this sort. Please, I don't know how she, we, will sustain this. I really wanted to just homeschool her for this reason, but then she would have lost all of her IEP support that I fought so hard to get in place, so my hands were tied. Also, the option was extended for us to utilize the AIDS support, but didn't feel safe with COVID. Please consider half-days. Margaret Cook. I am writing as the parent of a child with special needs. Virtual learning is impossible for us. It feels like the district has completely neglected and left behind families of children with special needs. We do not have a stay-at-home parent, and most day programs do not accept children with special needs. Please, I beg you to allow children with special needs to return to school as early as possible, along with the youngest children for whom remote learning doesn't work either. Older children and typically developing learners can continue to do remote learning, while young children and children with special needs should be able to safely social distance and use the facilities. I feel that RPS is failing my daughter and all of the other children in the district. I feel that RPS with special needs. Please think of the families of special needs children and do not keep leaving us behind. It is possible to have a small group of children. Amanda Reisner. I want to start off by saying I am so proud of my colleagues. We did the unthinkable and did it well, and that is a testament to our hard work and dedication to the kids and families of Richmond. My main concern, and the concern of many parents and teachers in the district, is the length of the school day. It is not developmentally appropriate for the younger kids to be sitting at a desk staring at a screen all day. Wednesday went so much better than any other day this week because the kids were able to attend to the work the entire time. We also need to consider the learning coaches that have to sit next to their child and assist all day. I would like to suggest that we consider doing what Henrico and Chesterfield are doing. I know I've heard from people in the district say things like, "We have different needs than the counties," but kids' attention spans and developmental appropriateness isn't different. Kids are kids everywhere you go. For elementary schools. Christina Zankowitz. Dear RPS School Board members, the kindergarten day must be shortened. The current schedule is not healthy for students, parents, caretakers, or teachers. I propose limiting synchronous screening time to one hour per day, and then students can follow lesson plans, work as assigned by the teacher. The school teachers should be available throughout the day for help as students or parents need it. Ellen Lucky. First, I'd like to acknowledge the great work RPS has done during this panoramic, and for that, we are truly grateful. I ask that you all please take heed to this parent's request. I have three elementary kids in RPS, a first, third, and fifth grader. One child has an IEP, and one child has a 504 plan. We are on with them all day, every day. Our fifth grader received numerous homework projects due within the first week of school. There should not be any homework given during virtual learning. It is emotionally and mentally draining for students, parents, and caretakers. We cannot take care of our families' needs if we are on the computer with our children from 9:15 to 3: and then back on for hours helping them type, understanding how to use laptops, completing homework, scanning and uploading documents for homework. We also noticed RPS laptops do not grant access to print directly from them. Allison Hefty. I have a kindergartner at Lynnwood-Holton. I am writing to ask if we could reevaluate the school afternoon hours. I support shortening the computer time until noon and perhaps doing some independent work in the afternoon. It's too much screen time. It's too much screen time for a five-year-old to work until 3:00. My daughter is no longer engaged. I'm dragging her back in front of the computer, and she is exhausted by the end of the school day. Please consider this idea. Rachel Beanland. I live in the fan and am the mother of three kids in Richmond Public Schools. My seven-year-old daughter attends Fox, my 12-year-old daughter attends Benford, and my 15-year-old son attends Code RVA High School. I'm specifically concerned about what's happening at Fox and all the elementary schools across the city. The 9 to 3 school day is untenable for a seven-year-old. She's on the laptop all day, not learning anything, sorry to say. And by 3:00 p.m. when she gets off, she's so zonked, I can't work with her on second-grade concepts that she needs to know. I realize there are no good options here, but the elementary school kids in particular definitely need a shorter school day. As it stands right now, I'm considering pulling her out of school entirely and homeschooling because I'm certain I can provide her with more than she's getting online in less time per day. Sarah Revel. I have two children at Southampton Elementary, third grade and kindergarten. Their teachers are doing an amazing job despite the challenges this year has presented and are doing outstanding work with the kids. We so appreciate them. We are now a week in, and I have concerns about the length of the school day. It is simply too long, especially for kindergarten. I do not believe my five-year-old child is going to be able to learn in the afternoons after being on screen all morning. She is not able to engage meaningfully at that point, if at all. I would love to see a morning-only kindergarten or a brief afternoon session for resource rotation, only if that is the way, the only way to get them in. The humanities are important. We are not prepared to give up library, music, Spanish art, or PE. Both of my children could be expected to do some independent or asynchronous work in the afternoons, but I would ask. Bridget Newberry. Every day should be Wednesday scheduled for high school. Anthony Castellano. I know that the task of educating all Richmond's public school children online is an immense one, and I am so impressed with how well everyone is doing, given this very difficult situation. For the most part, I believe things are going extremely well, and I would compliment far more than I would criticize. However, I would implore you to consider shortening the online component of the day for all of our elementary and middle school children. My wife Rosa and I have children at RPS in grades 7, 6, 5, and 2. The amount of time that they are being asked to sit at their computers is just far too long. This is something that would be tremendously difficult for most adults, myself included, and to ask it of our children is just too much. I have spoken with friends and family in other districts around the country in which their children have online class meetings in the morning, and then after lunch are assigned to read. Valerie Catrow. I am writing to publicly thank Principal Antoine London and the teachers and staff at Henderson Middle School for a wonderful start to the school year. Principal London has been kind, patient, and communicative throughout the entire reopening process. His approach to interacting with students and their parents is so calming and reassuring. The teachers at Henderson started the week with such enthusiasm and dedication. All week, our house was filled with the sound of our son giggling happily and chatting away with his classmates. It was a joy to hear. Parenting during this pandemic has been difficult, but this past week offered great comfort. A special thank you to our son's teachers, Brianna Upton, Brittany Williams, Namako Nelson, Kiara Abdalikar, and Sandra Hayward-Jones. Thank you also to Sonia Branch for her kind and prompt communication. Heather McLeese-Frazier. First, a heartfelt thanks for the time, thought, and hard work everyone at RPS has put into designing a meaningful educational option for our children during this unprecedented time. I write to you as the parent of four children, three school-age students, and a toddler, and as an adult myself, as an adult student myself in nursing school whose classes have been forced online by the pandemic. Learning online is hard, even for an extremely focused and highly motivated adult. It is incredibly challenging to sit for hours and concentrate on taking good notes while someone talks live on a screen. You do so knowing your teacher can't see that you have questions, that if you pause to raise your hand digitally, you will miss vital information while waiting for a response. Nicole Davis. First, I would like to say I'm so appreciative of the hard work and dedication of all RPS staff in taking care of our students' emotional, physical, and academic needs in a way that is safe for all. This year, a monumental task has been asked of our educators and school staff, and we have been so impressed with the entire RPS team and how they have reopened with love. As a former teacher who is currently staying home with my children this year, my main concern is the length of the school day in particular for the younger grades. My children are in pre-K and kindergarten, and while we could not be more pleased with their teachers, they are truly exceptional. The synchronous portion of the school day is simply too long. I believe that synchronous instructions should end at lunchtime with the afternoons fully devoted to independent learning, parent meetings, teacher planning, and one-on-one. Melissa Jaeger. I would like to advocate for a shorter school day for elementary school students in RPS. The current Wednesday schedule would be perfect. My suggestion is that the encore classes be prerecorded and available for families to do at a time that works for them. It would be even better if the encore classes could be presented to the whole elementary age group as a single group, perhaps with different projects for different year groups so that siblings can do them together rather than sitting alone. We are committed to making virtual public school work, and we appreciate all you do.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm afraid you missed a few. Rebecca McLaughlin. Allison Sowers. And Philip Skaggs. Can you?
Thank you.
Skaggs, can you find them? Thank you.
I did. My screen jumped down a few. Thank you. And my apologies to those. Okay. Rebecca McLaughlin. I am the parent of a five-year-old first grader at Bellevue. I'd like to start off by saying I think RPS, and specifically all the teachers and administrators at Bellevue, are doing a phenomenal job at navigating this very interesting time. That being said, I am concerned about the intense 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. schedule that has been set forth for very young children, even with the various brain breaks. I realize there are factors I'm not versed in, such as state or federal mandated classroom hours for various subjects. However, I feel limiting active teaching to the mornings only is appropriate for younger students. Some specific thoughts to consider regarding any lesson time requirements. Virtual learning eliminates transition times. In order to manage in-person classrooms, a great amount of time is consumed by the logistics of lining up. Allison Sowers. My family is new to Richmond and new to school as our oldest started kindergarten at Southampton Elementary last week. There has been far too much on-screen synchronous time for the kids, the teacher, and the parents. Please consider a morning-only or the reduced schedule solution for kindergarten. This would also allow time during the day for teachers to work one-on-one with more students as needed. The schedule has been a struggle for everyone, but otherwise, we are very happy at Southampton and with our wonderful teacher, Ms. Walton. Philip Skaggs. Hello, I wanted to take the time to give some feedback about the virtual learning experience that my family has had. We have two boys, a first grader and fourth grader at Lynnwood-Holton. While COVID has created this situation that is not the most desirable, I recognize that a ton of thought and love has gone into creating the lesson plan and format. We found that all of the instructional videos and town hall meetings were very helpful and informative. We feel like the teachers have been communicating well, and with one week behind us, I feel that we are on the right track and have a great situation to evolve. And once everyone finds a groove, it will be as successful as possible. So far, my first grader has been engaged and has been given multiple breaks to let him refresh and get back on the screen. I have seen him dancing and singing with his classmates and also focused on the task before him. To be honest, he was the one I was really worried about being able to focus.
Ms. Wilson, would you like me to continue?
You may. Thank you. Our time for you.
Thank you. Janine Valker. I am sharing my public comment with you all in advance as you no doubt have been inundated with emails about virtual school over the past week. And we will be thinking about all of this prior to tomorrow's board meeting. I would like to thank all of the incredible teachers and staff who put their everything into this first week of virtual school. I hope all of you know how appreciated you are. In addition to the tremendous grace and love that we have seen in opening school, we should also return to the school with compassion and flexibility. We need to have compassion and flexibility to shorten the length of the instructional day for our children, families, and teachers. I hope that the school board will request that the administration shorten our instructional day. Any moment that a child, family, teacher, or staff feels overwhelmed by the length of time they have to be on a computer or tablet, no matter how many breaks may be sprinkled throughout the day, is a moment to many. Let us have the compassion. Andley Perkins. A huge thank you to all the teachers who spent their time off studying and preparing for this Herculean effort known as virtual learning. Your workload was like no other, none other, this past summer. It did not allow for that critical time away of recharging and focusing on loved ones. School administrations also spend a summer like none other, and we are grateful for their work. I am concerned that we are once again at a crossroads and ignoring the expertise that our frontline teachers. The school day on screens, despite the synchronous and asynchronous learning, is too long. Five-minute brain breaks, who are we kidding? You need five minutes just to switch the brain focus off. We keep hearing from teachers how beneficial one-on-one time and small groups would be in the afternoon. Never mind the concentration and ability to sit. Never mind the concentration and ability to sit still that is lost after lunch in virtual school. What is considered C-hours can be adjusted. There just has to be the will of the board. Latisha Lockett. I have a five-year-old child attending kindergarten virtually at Barack Obama Elementary. She is expected to be online for live classes from 9:15 to about 3:00 p.m. each day. This is very strenuous for her. Around 1:00 p.m., it is extremely difficult for her to stay focused and alert during the class streams. I believe that for someone as young as her, four hours of online class time should be the max. I know I am not the only parent feeling this way. How can we try to rectify this situation? If we keep at this pace, our little ones will be worn out before the end of the month. Please consider making some kind of changes. Natalie Patino Wright. I have never been so proud to be a part of RPS as I have been through this insane time. Thank you for putting safety first and providing teachers and students the tools they need to learn from home. I dare say this is the first time I've ever had the opportunity to just teach without the interruptions that arise in the school building and classroom environment. I will say that with online learning, we have an opportunity to make a more flexible and spread-out learning schedule. Looking at the screen all day got difficult by Friday and resulted in terrible headaches for me. I can only imagine how it must feel for some students. I feel like I am cramming a lot of information into each class after they have sat in other classes just four minutes prior. Some classes have no transition time at all. Breaks are going to be essential for students to truly absorb the information being taught to them. It will also help teachers collect themselves and prepare for the next class. I teach six, seven, and eight. Sarah Hunter. I am a teacher living and working in the Ninth District. After the first week of virtual learning, I am concerned with the sustainability of the amount of on-screen synchronous learning for elementary students. By the afternoon, student energy is low, even during engaging and fun get-to-know-you activities. For teachers, preparing and converting to brand-new curriculum to fit our virtual learning is extending my working hours by at least three hours daily, including weekends. I am used to using some of my personal time, especially within the first few weeks of school, but this is a different ballgame. Teachers need planning time built into our contracted hours to convert L and Eureka to best fit the virtual world our students are learning in. I am happy to learn this curriculum and give it a try, but I cannot sacrifice fifteen-plus hours of my personal time to do so. Teaching until noon and having planning/office hours after lunch until 3:30 will be beneficial for teachers. Tanya Shelton. Thank you for at least listening. I know some individuals in the RPS Central Office have their own agendas about school schedules, but pushing these agendas through are not fully taking our students into consideration. From my journal perspective as a middle-school teacher in RPS. Day one, my first class this morning was good. Students were engaged and pretty on point. Something happens to students after lunchtime, though. The participation in my second class was near zero, and the students kept asking how much longer. Then, I had students with fried brains for the last class of the day, starting at 2:50. I had to repeat the instructions three times for their assignment, and some still didn't understand what to do. My other two classes at least understood how to complete the assignments. Trust me, I feel those students with the fried brains. It was unbelievably taxing on me as well. Day two, today was so much better. Meredith Thompson. This all-day Zoom schedule is not working for any stakeholder. Our teachers are amazing, and the live instruction is much needed and much appreciated. But it doesn't matter how many breaks they give. Getting on and off the computer all day long is not age-appropriate. I know that we are only one week in, but I do not see where more time will increase my child's capacity to tolerate this schedule when I, as an adult, cannot sit on Zoom meetings from 9:15 to 3:45, four days a week, without losing my sanity. And we haven't even begun to use the new curriculum. Per the American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization, screen time for elementary students should be limited to one to 1.5 hour per day max. Why are we trying to recreate in-person learning schedule in a virtual environment? Please change the schedule immediately so that students are online for no more than two hours per day. Melina Patterson. I am aware that we are only four days in, and I am so grateful for the work and love that teachers have shown my kids at their schools. But I do want to ask that the school board recognize that this is a lot of time on screen for children and adults. Both of my children, grades five and seven, have had homework, also computer-based, after school. I hope that the school board will communicate to teachers and principals that they do not need to be synchronous from 9:15 to 3:00 or 4:20, and that if students are assigned work to be completed independently, that time be given during the school day to do it, or that it not be computer-based. Less synchronous time and/or shortened school days with more time to complete work independently would be better for my children. I think that different age groups and different families probably have different needs. Megan McSweeney. First of all, I want to say that I am immensely pleased with the communication from RPS and the Herculean effort from the teachers and staff to pull off this school year. However, I am extremely concerned by the length of the school day. The lack of breaks and the fact that even with homework, my daughter was assigned more work to do on the computer. I recognize that it is probably an easier way to grade assignments than if the kids fill out worksheets or handwrite their work, take a photo to upload, but increases their screen time even more. Personally, I don't believe we need to recreate a traditional schooling model in an extremely non-traditional year. My thirteen-year-old has napped immediately after school. Her back was in extreme pain, and she had headaches every day. Once the time changes, the children will barely have any time outside in the sun. The day ending at 4:20 is so extremely late. I am hoping that we can get creative with projects and different assignments to lessen the constant screen time. Sarah Bloom. Thank you to the board for your time. I feel compelled to weigh in on those advocating for following the 1.5-2-hour-max screen time guidelines recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization. Obviously, those recommendations were predistanced learning during a pandemic world. No elementary school child in 2-5th grade will be able to learn in two hours or less of interaction on the computer. I will add that my fourth grader loves the live instruction piece. It's what motivates him. It is the independent learning time that drags for him. No kids learn the same, and it isn't perfect for everyone. But I can say what we have now is currently working for us, and I know it is for others as well. Schedule tweaks may be warranted, but do not discard the whole and do not remove breaks in humanities times. Thank you for all the hard work and time you put into it. Lauren West. After four days of online instruction, our schedule is not working. The screen time is well past what the BDOE recommends, sixty to ninety minutes for third grade. It is ridiculous that the expectation for number of hours virtually should be the same as in person. It's not possible. As an adult, I have trouble sitting at the computer all day. We need to do better for our kids. My mental health and my students' mental health should be the most important thing this year. Please consider amending the schedule. Alyssa Karanik. We cannot continue this long of a schedule. Teachers, students, and families should not have to sacrifice their health. The research on screen time is out there. Why was it not considered? Week one, and we are all exhausted. I would hate for this year to be the year hundreds of students stop loving to learn. Julie Fay. I am a kindergarten teacher, and I don't feel that the time my students are online is appropriate for their age. I feel that the synchronous teaching should be done in the morning, and then the asynchronous teaching/small-group work be done in the afternoon. As of right now, the students are mainly online from 9:15 to 3:00. I hope something can change regarding their time online. Chrissy Segal. I am an RPS parent and teacher. I support virtual school for this school year. RPS has been amazing in the shift to online learning. I am proud to work in this school district and for my school. I am also very supportive of my child's RPS school. Thank you for everything RPS put into their teachers and students with all of the changes. However, the virtual schedule as it stands is too much. It is too much for teachers, parents, and students. For example, as an elementary school teacher, I am required to be live with my students online from 9:15 to 3:00, with the exception of the one-hour lunch and two fifteen-minute breaks. I am not allowed to have my students take any more breaks beyond one in the morning and one in the afternoon. It doesn't matter how energetic or engaging your lessons are. The children cannot and should not be staring into a screen that long. While there is asynchronous time built into parts of the day, math and language are. Jasmine Betts. One of my positive experiences about week one is getting a chance to talk to my daughter's teachers as she reassured me that we are on the same page. It eased my anxiety, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the year. Kim Gomez. The first week of virtual learning exceeded my expectations. I have seven RPS elementary school students doing virtual learning at my house a few days of the week, and because of that, I've had the opportunity to see virtual instruction from Carrie, Bradrock, and Mumford. The teachers have been so engaging, encouraging, calm, and kind as they work to create a warm, inviting virtual space for students. You can really feel the love. Let's keep this up. I would like for RPS to make 12:01 the lunch recess time for all elementary students, and if teachers need/want the little ones, want to let the little ones head to lunch early, that's great. But keep schedules aligned. It will be best to not ask for anyone to be back on their computer until 1:00 p.m. Also, we love visiting the Lit Limo on Friday and are going to look forward to making that a part of our weekly routine. Thank you, RPS. You are doing an amazing job. Eric Dammer. I am absolutely overwhelmed and full of gratitude for RPS's wonderful approach to reopen with love. I think the first week was incredibly well thought out, and I am in awe of how well our teachers are connecting with our students and at RPS's generous reopen-with-love school supply packs, Chromebooks, hotspots, and headphones. I long for a day when Richmond children can count on internet access in their homes without having to subscribe to a private carrier and without the school district having to supply hotspots. Meanwhile, thank you. I have two children in RPS, an elementary-school-age child and a middle-schooler. The elementary student has two fifteen-minute daily breaks built in to allow time for movement, resetting, snack time, and unplugging, as well as an hour-long lunch/recess period. That day seems doable. If more time in front of a screen than we would choose. Pat Levy-Lavelle. Our names are Jessica and Pat Levy-Lavelle. We have two points to make. First, thank you. We are so tremendously proud of RPS and to be part of a district now more than ever in this moment. We are the parents of an Albert Hills sixth grader, a Mary Mumford fourth grader, and, starting today, a Mayflower pre-K kiddo. We are thrilled with the way the district acted immediately and systemically to respond to the pandemic and with the fact that RPS has led the way ever since. Our kiddos love their teachers, and we know that everyone has been working so hard to get us to this point. So again, thank you. Second, we respectfully ask that the RPS do everything it can, from the top down, to encourage teachers to reduce or eliminate homework this year. Virtual school days are tough and draining. Once they are over, kids need a break, a chance to be kids and bond with people in their lives. Kids across the district need love and learning this year. Kristin Green. I'm impressed with the wonderful first week my two daughters at Benford Middle School had. Everyone was so friendly, kind, and warm, and they went above and beyond to make children feel welcome and engaged. I also want to thank you for everything you've done to make virtual school the best it can be. This is no small feat. Please know your work is seen and appreciated. I want to talk about the length of the middle-school day. No matter how you slice it, the school day is just too long. I am asking that the school board and administration work quickly to compress the school day. For an eleven-year-old and a twelve-year-old to march up to their rooms a little after 9:00 a.m. and not come down again until 4:00 p.m., except for thirty minutes at lunch, is unconscionable. As a writer, I know that I am not on my game for seven hours a day. Instead, I wake up at 5:00 a.m. and try to work for three to four hours interrupted. After that, my concentration and productivity go downhill. Julie Joyner. Thank you to RPS administration team for their leadership during the past six months. It is the responsibility of this board to give the administration the policy directive and then let them get to work and implement the directive. The pivot to virtual schooling is a great example of how a team functions effectively. Mr. Camrus. Thank you for leading our district through these challenging times. Your leadership is the essential ingredient that is pushing RPS to a new level. Change is so hard for all of us, and especially for our families with fewer resources. Thank you for easing the burden of food and access to technology. Thank you for reminding families that we will get through these times and that RPS loves us. Finally, thank you to the majority of school board members who recognize that RPS administration is filled with the expertise, innovation, and commitment to our students and trusting them to build a better RPS. Kaitlyn Waldron. Ninety-minute classes are great when you are in person. There is an opportunity to check off all of the boxes in a lesson plan and even reteach. However, ninety minutes in front of the computer means nothing to a student. I haven't met at least half of my students in my Block Four classes. They start at almost 3:00 p.m. My Block Three classes are also late. However, the Wednesday schedule that we followed, so many more students participated, engaged in the lesson, and turned in the assignment. I am awed for having office hours at the end of the day, every day for students who need to check back in or need to help with an activity. There is no benefit right now to a teacher's well-being to be told to teach bell-to-bell when students are leaving class because their parents need them to come somewhere with them. This is stressful for teachers as well, being told to overplan for ninety-minute sessions. Alex Fisher-Ritz. I am the parent of a seventh grader at Benford Middle. I have to admit, I was skeptical that RPS would be able to pull off a meaningful virtual school experience. However, I have been pleasantly surprised by our first week. My son has been energized, happy, and has had several times mentioned what a good experience he is having. Even lunch, which I thought would be sad, has been fun for him as he FaceTimes with his friends at our dining room table. Since he ate school lunch last year, we have been picking up this year from his middle school, which has helped foster a physical connection with the school. The later start and end times have been great for us also, as our child is not an early riser. Plus, a household where both parents are lucky to have busy, full-time jobs, I appreciate the engagement later in the afternoon. His teachers at Benford have been cognizant of the length of the day and have been breaking things up, so he has plenty of screen breaks. Samantha Best. Thank you, RPS, for a fantastic week of school. I've never been so proud to be a part of RPS. My two daughters, a fourth grader at Lynnwood-Holton and a freshman at Richmond Community, had a fantastic first week. I am so impressed by the time and preparation that was put into ensure a smooth and successful start to the new virtual environment. The teachers have been thoughtful, creative, and are challenging themselves to find new ways to engage students in a more meaningful way. My fourth grader shared that she likes school better in this format and wants virtual school all year. She feels she can focus better. Shout out to Mr. Johnson, our fourth-grade teacher at Holton, as well as Ella, Summer Schultz, Nina Ford, Julianne Kramer, and Rachel Tracy from Richmond Community High School. We see you and appreciate all you are doing. Thank you, Jason Camrus, for your leadership, impeccable communication, and for providing much-needed confidence during what would be a far more challenging situation. Meredith Thompson. This all-day Zoom schedule is not working for any stakeholder. Our teachers are amazing, and the live stream instruction is much needed and appreciated. But it doesn't matter how many breaks they give. Getting on and off the computer all day is not age-appropriate. I know we are only week one in, but I do not see where more time will increase my child's capacity to tolerate this schedule when I, as an adult, cannot sit on Zoom meetings. When I, as an adult, cannot sit on Zoom meetings from nine fifteen to three forty-five. Four days a week without losing my sanity, and we haven't even begun the new curriculum. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization and N I H all recommend limiting screen time for school-age children. Why are we trying to recreate the in-person learning schedule in a virtual environment? Please change the schedule immediately so that students are online only in the mornings. Mira Singer. Thank you to the RPS administration for their hard work to reopen with love. I've been encouraged and impressed with the solution-focused process that has been unfolding under the administration's leadership. During these unprecedented times. While challenges will continue to arise as we adjust to virtual school. I believe the administration has the vision and love for RPS to rise to the occasion and get it done. At the same time, it is the responsibility of the school board to provide policy direction and then support the administration in achieving it. With only six days of virtual school under, actually, under our belts. I would encourage the school board and administration to allow additional time for teachers and families to adjust to the virtual school. Before significant changes are made and then revisit thoughtfully with ample time for input, especially from those on the margins. Victoria Pearson. I am a middle school L teacher. Specifically teaching newcomer students who have been in the United States for less than twelve months. And are currently at a Level One of English proficiency. The current schedule is not conducive for learning, even for secondary students. We are told that each class period should be to, should be a hybrid of synchronous and asynchronous. But the student must stay on or near the computer from nine fifteen until four twenty to log in and out of classes. Allowing for very little time away from the screen. The Wednesday schedule of all face-to-face instruction in the morning with flexible learning time in the afternoon. It is a better option for our students. It allows for less screen time and better accommodates families and students' home schedules. Students can work on their own time at their own pace with the teacher available in the afternoons. To schedule individual and small group sessions. Mary Rose. Hello all and thank you for your continued work towards reopening with love for this virtual semester at RPS. I wanted to weigh in on the virtual experience in advance of tonight's meeting. I have a second grader at Lynnwood-Holton and the experience so far was well thought out, as well as a bit bumpy. There were the expected tech hiccups that were supposed to be expected, a few missing pieces within the home kit. But overall, nothing insurmountable, until we get to the actual time spent online. For this age group, I would seriously take a longer look at how much instructional time is spent online. By the week's end, I was exhausted and my daughter was in tears. She's never been brought to tears by the thought of schooling, but the unending screen time was too much. I would suggest bringing the total screen learning time down to three total hours a day. With longer breaks with suggestions for movement, exploration, connection activities. Darlene Slate. Below is a message that I submitted for our RPS direct shout-outs on Tuesday in celebration of our first day in our new virtual normal. Mr. Camaras has been so gracious in ensuring that we all are recognized in his daily shout-outs. I feel it is time he received his just due as well. Thank you. I know this won't get posted, but I wanted you to know how very proud I am to be part of the RPS team. Love always wins, and I think we had a huge win today. Your leadership and forethought has brought our district to the forefront and we are shining examples for others to follow. But most importantly, our students have every opportunity to excel and succeed because they know they are loved. For far, for so long, RPS were the followers. Today, we are the leaders. Thank you for your tireless efforts to do what is right by all of us. Today, sir, you deserve to be shouted out. Michael Simon. We have two boys at Lynnwood-Holton and we were pretty nervous about the first day, but it rocked. Everything was great, and while we look very forward to in-person instruction or some version of what we had in pre-COVID times. This will completely work for now, and y'all made it happen, so just want to say thank you. Christina Franco. I'm a student at the Success Center and I feel very good studying there. The schedules are very good and it allows me to study and do many more things. They have helped me a lot so that I can graduate. John Bagwell. As the parent of a first grader at Holton Elementary School, I would like to thank and commend the RPS for. Commend RPS for the transition to virtual school this year. I can only guess what a tremendous undertaking and challenge this process has been for teachers and administrators. But we have been extremely impressed and pleased with the results thus far. Our child is happy about starting school each day, engaged, and eager to learn on this new platform. The accessibility of Holton staff has been exceptional as we made the transition. And there have been few, very few tech issues due to the ample training resources and troubleshooting provided. We are grateful to all the teachers, school staff, and district administrators who have helped make this transition. Allowing us to feel confident that our child is receiving educational engagement during the pandemic. In a safe and nurturing environment provided by RPS. We feel lucky to be a part of the community and look forward to continued involvement to support RPS. Kara Stuck. Richmond Public Schools began the school year last Tuesday virtually. As the parent of a middle school student and a high school student. I want to congratulate and thank all of the staff for embarking on this new and challenging job with enthusiasm, dedication, and love. As with anything new and complicated, there are going to be challenges and there's always room for improvement. I am requesting that the administration and the school board adjust the daily school schedule for remote learning. By separating the synchronous and asynchronous portions of the school day. I believe and would vary and would argue very strenuously that the day nine fifteen to four twenty. Of logging on and off and switching between synchronous live lessons and asynchronous independent work. Is too long and utterly inefficient for most students. It would work so much better for all students to have a schedule that includes only the synchronous live lessons. Amy Wolfert Brew. Shout out to RPS as a whole. You all sent so many thorough emails and they were all so helpful and created a seamless transition to begin school. RPS often gets negative comments and eye rolls from other districts, but we showed up and showed out on September eighth. I am extremely proud to be an alumni and now parent of an RPS student. RPS set the bar high and showed complete commitment to the students and families. With the way they ensured everyone had what they needed for the first day. I am sure equipping everyone with supplies and tech support will lead us to being on the right side of history. RPS, you have reopened with love, and I give kudos to every single person who contributed to this, and I humbly thank you. Anne Shields. I would like to take a minute to celebrate the work of Daryl Williams, Mike Liggins, and the rest of the Community Walks RPS team. These walks accomplish their intention of reaching our greater community and helping set families up for success. However, they have also supported the creation of deeper community connections and opportunities. For the RPS family to truly feel that we are in this together. Meeting people across the division outside, literally, and having fun together has been more needed than perhaps any of us knew. Maybe we said we knew our community before, but I would say now we really know our community. An RPS community and the community that leans on us. The opportunities Community Walks have given us to connect the families and each other has truly been healing during the crisis. Nicole Spencer Stone Street. I just want to thank everyone at RPS for such a great week, especially the team at Holton Elementary. They have gone above and beyond any of my expectations. My son was nervous about the new virtual aspect of school, but his teacher has worked hard to create an environment. That he is now excited to return to every day. I couldn't be more thankful. Lindsay Chase. I am a parent of a second grader at Mary Mumford Elementary. My son's teacher is doing a heroic job deploying virtual learning so far. We could not ask for a better teacher. However, the daily schedule is too erroneous in terms of screen time. I see my squirmy second grader white-knuckling it through the Zooms, trying so hard to be attentive. While he gets more and more uncomfortable wearing the headset. I am concerned that too much screen time with too few breaks is going to lead to burnout. And I dislike for, and a dislike for school and learning. Virtual school simply cannot approximate in-person learning. And the daily schedule should better reflect that in terms of overall screen time. In my view, at best, this semester is a bridge to keep children connected to their schools, their teachers, their education, and their peers. The current amount of screen time seems unsustainable. Mary Dark. I want to take time out to let all of you know what a smooth first week of virtual school my son had last week. Prior to the start of the school year, Principal Murray and the staff were very instrumental in keeping parents and students informed. With the process and progress being made. I had several interactions with my son's counselor, Ms. Kelly, who initiated a call to make sure Malachi. Had the classes needed to receive the advanced diploma, as well as the information and requirements for college. There were several town hall meetings for parents and students, so we knew what we needed to do. When it needed to be done and how to get things done. They made sure technology was distributed in a timely manner. Any questions or concerns I had were addressed and answered the same day. I just need to let you all know that before, that the before actions by the John Marshall family. Made the first week of school one of the smoothest I have ever had as a parent. Megan Cole. I am writing as both an RPS parent and a RPS teacher. I am very concerned about the virtual schedules we have adopted in the attempt to mimic a regular school day. They are exhausting, unrealistic, and unsustainable. The middle school schedule in particular is far too long. Nine fifteen to four twenty with only a thirty-minute lunch and a five-minute, and five minutes between classes. My son is exhausted by the end of the day. There is no way he can keep this up and participate in after-school activities. I suggest going to an even odd schedule with three classes a day. The elementary schedule is also incredibly challenging for both teachers and students. I suggest finding a way to get all synchronous work completed before lunch. So that students have time to complete asynchronous work, recess, and encores in the afternoon. Students are having a very hard time staying focused for live instruction after the lunch break. Teachers are. Maggie. I'm in seventh grade at Albert Hill, and in my opinion, the school days are way too long. Seven hours is too long, even with the thirty-minute break. I need to school, I need the school days to be shorter. Emily Kavanaugh. I, I, my name is Emily Kavanaugh, parent to a RPS seventh grader. I am so grateful to RPS reopen with love. You are all amazing and show love every day. However, the school day from middle school is too long. There is too much stress in the world for our children right now. And a seven-hour school day is too much. Even shortening it by ninety minutes would be very helpful to my child's mental health. But four full hours after lunch is a daunting afternoon schedule for them. Dennis Barrios. Hello, I am a student at the Success Center and the flexibility of the schedules of this program. Allows me to do work during the day and when I return home. I connect to my classes, I connect to my classes. The program has helped me. Thank you. Sikoria Anderson. Just a little note, today was nothing short of amazing. Today I heard laughing, I saw plenty of smiles. And witnessed my children display a lot of patience and excitement. The staff at Franklin Military Academy did a fantastic job making the virtual learning process easy and stress-free. Even when we had a few bumps in the road this morning. I am definitely a proud RPS parent and employee. Jenny Gill. I want to say thank you for all the work that has gone into making the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year a success. Our family is super appreciative. I do have one concern I would like to address, and that is the length of the school day. I have an eighth and fifth grader in RPS. I am not as concerned about elementary because there is more flexibility in how the day is run, because they do not have multiple teachers. I am very concerned about middle school. By fifth, sixth period, my eighth grader is done. She told me last week she has a hard time even hearing what her sixth-hour teacher is saying because she's so weary. She is taking Spanish two. She loves her teacher and the subject, but her brain is on overload. Is there a way to shorten the day? Perhaps block schedules for all middle schoolers in RPS. I know there is not going to be one perfect answer, but I don't see how these days are sustainable. My child. Adrian Hughes. I am a senior at Georgewith High School. I think that RPS have trained. I think that RPS should have trained the teachers better. They should have helped the teachers better. It does not make sense that the teachers don't fully know how to work everything on Google Meet. My first class of the day is probably probability and statistics, but my teacher was hired a few days before we started school. She doesn't have all the resources yet. My history teacher, he can't do everything because the virtual test textbook is acting up. We need to fix this. Plus, we need everyone in class. Hopefully, everyone can have a tablet or a Chromebook. If y'all or you or whoever runs this, I hope that y'all can help out some way or another. Thank you for your time. Have a great day. Rebecca Richardson. Please, please think about sending our kindergarteners back to school. I feel that my child isn't learning anything. This is very difficult for us parents, the kids and teachers. I am scared my child is going to be so behind and is missing all of this opportunity to learn. She isn't excited for school at all, and that is very sad for me to see. Because before all of this virtual stuff, she was so excited to go to school and start kindergarten. I feel everyone is failing these kids. Darren Thomas. I wanted to share my experience about the Community Walks I had the utmost pleasure volunteering for. The Community Walks were a safe and a necessary outreach tool to ensure families were informed of the RPS plan for reopening. Many families were provided with answers to questions or concerns they had about registration, meal distribution, and technology distribution. It also gave faculty and staff of communities and schools and the RPS community. The opportunity to safely engage with their students and sustain a healthy relationship. Barbara Haas. I'm the librarian at Tis, uh, Bouchon Middle School and a resident of the third district. I want to send congratulations on a successful first week of school. I'd like to recognize how hard everyone worked to make for an amazingly smooth opening. I have heard nothing but good news from both staff and parents. We navigated our snafus with grace and love. I couldn't be prouder to work for Richmond Public Schools. Let's have a great year. Shannon Dowling. I am writing to ask that the virtual schedule for middle school students be reconsidered. This schedule is cruel, inappropriate for a mind this age, and completely unsustainable. The day is too long and too synchronous. Bell-to-bell instruction is not feasible and not appropriate for students. Working parents or teachers in a pandemic situation. Having students log in and out throughout the entire day is frustrating and unsustainable. Five-minute breaks between courses allow little brain or energy breaks. And lunches are too short that students do, do not have time to get outside. My middle school child remains on the computer long after my high school student logs off. He is unable to give his best to the later courses because of Zoom brain drain. And this could be detrimental as students this age are taking credit-based courses. Ridley Carter. Last week, virtual learning had some challenges and great moments for me, for. Last week, virtual learning had some challenges and some great moments for my students as well as my children. My children's teachers at Bellevue were prepared and very energetic. This helped them become more comfortable as well as excited about returning their computer, returning to their computers the next day. As for my students, we faced many obstacles and had to practice and drill for the entire week. To learn how to maneuver Google classrooms and the other windows we use to complete our tasks. We watched a TED Talk and created affirmations. We discussed a growth mindset versus a fixed mindset. And lastly, we talked about filling our buckets to build a community of teaching with love. They were able to read their affirmations on a flip grid and some brought tears to my eyes to hear. And see the confidence in our students. This has been the epitome of change, but we are embracing it and making. Gilbert Carter, I want to share with the RPS family how great my first week of virtual school unfolded. On the first day of virtual school in the middle of my second class, the power and internet went out in Churchill. Thankfully, Dr. Smith was making her virtual rounds checking in with classes when my power went out. She was able to keep students calm and engaged for the remainder of class. In addition, Conal Hudson helped me a great deal with creating a backup backup plan in case an event like that happens again. By the end of the day, I was able to get in touch with my students and parents. I am super thankful for the patience, grace and understanding from my students and parents during that day and moving forward. It is a great feeling to know that everyone is on board for this virtual learning experience and are optimistic about this journey. Franklin Military Academy truly has the best administrators, teachers, parents and students. Taisha Buster, I am a parent of three RPS students. I have a third, sixth and ninth grader. I am writing to ask the school board and superintendent cameras to cut back on the hours. My oldest children are on from nine fifteen to four twenty with only a lunch break. This is entirely too long for kids. Please consider cutting the hours back to two or three o'clock. Laura, Laura Kinnaman, I'm a second grade teacher with RPS. I have taught for fourteen years and I love my job. The current schedule for younger students is not sustainable. It is not developmentally developmentally appropriate for them to be in front of a screen for the amount of time outlined. I know we are all ready to return to some sort of normalcy, but this just isn't working. Please consider shortening the school day. I am exhausted by the end of the day. I really can't imagine how the kids must be feeling. Teresa Kennedy, I am an RPS parent times two. Both of my kids are at Holton and I just want to commend the administration on their engagement and support over the summer and leading up to this year. I don't know what we would have done without Jason Cameris and his leadership team. Including but not limited to Dr. Harris, Dr. F, Mr. Hughes and Ms. Hudasko. I have been beyond impressed with the love and empathy shown by everyone in the school administration. And I am so proud that we get to be a part of RPS. From compassion for kids' names to providing virtual backgrounds for kids to opening the first week. With a focus on love and grace, I have just been so thankful to be a part of a system that cares for the whole kid. I'd also just like to give a shout out to Dr. Hurt, Ms. Jefferson and all of the administrative staff and amazing teachers at Holton. It's clear you all have been working nonstop for weeks to plan for our kids in this new virtual world. Cameron Corb, hello, I joined a few of the Easton Community Walks. I thought they went really well. It was a great group of people to be around. Volunteers were all friendly and very open to speaking to community members that were out and about to ensure they had the proper info about reopening. Volunteer coordinators and leaders were very direct, easy to talk to and decisive. I enjoyed being a part of the canvassing efforts. My only concern was for outreach to families that did not live in the targeted complexes. For example, some of the complexes were close to residential streets and I don't feel like hitting a few blocks around those areas would have been a bad idea. But overall, it was a great effort that I was proud to be a part of. Kenya Ford, I must take time to send this email to let you and everyone in the RPS family know that they are appreciated. This may be lengthy, but every word will be worth the read and I hope you can share this with the entire RPS team. I am a parent of five, two that have already graduated from Huguenot High School. Acacia Watt and Jackwell Ford, one in the TJ High School, thanks to Ms. Sears and Ms. Jackson, one in Miles Jones Elementary School and one in Lucille Brown Middle School. I am alumni of RPS school system, HHS graduate myself, and I will always say that with pride. At the end of the nineteen twenty school year, you were all faced with a national pandemic with literally no real answers about what the future held for your students. Your jobs are really your own lives. Despite all of this, the teachers and staff figured things out and kept pushing. Ms. Nugent logged on twice per week via Zoom. Lee Downey, RPS, great job on getting kids back to school. Your team nailed it and deserves to drop the mic. My family thanks you. More to come and many challenges ahead, but let's celebrate the victories. Tara McCrone, I am submitting public comment for the first time. I've never been more concerned for the well being of both students, parents and RPS staff. This year has presented diverse challenges and all members of the Richmond community, so it's more essential than ever to listen intently to our needs. The last week of school proved that in reality, virtual learning will never be the same as in person instruction. Teachers are working to make our students' classrooms experiences as authentic as possible. But the current schedule is not conducive to our students' needs. Currently, the schedule mirrors an in-person instruction. All week I have observed my students struggle while working at different paces, struggle with using their technology and become distracted by things at home outside of their control. I believe the RPS schedule needs to be adapted to better address the needs of our community. I hope the school board does not need reminding that parents, students and staff have experienced and are still experiencing a traumatic global pandemic. So far, RPS has done an amazing job. Brian, Brian Kirkman, I'm a parent of three RPS students. I have a few concerns with this current virtual setup. We as parents have tried for years to limit our children's screen time exposure because of the health concerns, both physically and emotionally. The current model RPS has adopted defies both of these and has become a major topic of concern within our household. Our children log into this virtual school at nine fifteen AM and don't stop until four thirty PM with very little in the way of breaks in between classes. Once the school day is done, they are then expected to complete and incomplete schoolwork and homework beyond the four thirty school day. I find this unacceptable primarily because it is way too much time in front of a screen. And speaking with my optometrist, they suggest that the risk of near nearsightedness is heightened when given these long exposure periods. If the administration doesn't feel compelled. Armani Johnson, I am the CIS site coordinator at Henry Marsh Elementary School. This is a time more than ever, I was asked to share my experience, which can found below. This is a time that we must identify creative and effective ways to connect with the families we serve. Canvas and provided communities and schools with the opportunity to collaborate with various school support members to disperse information that resources needed to prepare our students and families for success during and outside of virtual schooling. Stephanie Walker, I'm a parent of a first grade student at Linwood Holton Elementary School. The way the schedule is being interpreted by our school and by our teachers does not support RPS's call for love and grace. If anything, the call for love and grace feels like a call for parents to extend the grace and love to RPS teachers and administrators. But I do not see this grace being extended to parents or students. Nor do I see it being extended to teachers by their administrators. There still seems to be an overwhelming pressure to fit the square peg of virtual learning into the circle hole of an in-person instruction. This model is not student centered. It does not support our students and families and set everyone up for success. If anyone, if anything, it's a model that meets the convenience and needs of the school administration. It fails to leave room for unique opportunities and flexibility that virtual learning can provide. The same pedagogies and planning that. Kendall Shore, there needs to be some clarification on how much time in a ninety minute and sixty minute asynchronous is asynchronous and synchronous. Teachers have no idea what administrators are looking for. Sydney Vomit, I'm a fifth grade teacher at Linwood Holton Elementary School. I want to thank everyone for a smooth first week of school, considering how different it was it is this year than any other year. Last week I was feeling the love and was given so much grace for when things did not go perfectly. This week has a completely different feel to it though, and it is stressful to say the least. This week, the demands for students, parents, teachers and other staff are simply too much. Parents are struggling to balance their work, ensuring that children log in and their unstable and their unstable internet. Teachers are struggling to balance the new curriculum, the many virtual platforms, checking attendance throughout the day, eye ready and PALS testing, along with our own personal needs such as our children. Unstable internet and mental health. I fear if these expectations continue to pile up, we will all burn out from exhaustion. I hope moving forward, the school board and RPS administration. Wendy Thompson, I am an RPS teacher and I love what I do. Virtual teaching has presented many challenges that I did not anticipate, such as the extreme fatigue from the hours on screen and the sheer exhaustion from the hours of work it takes to plan a successful virtual lesson. I am writing to ask you all to reconsider the screen time requirements for middle and high school students. I teach at a high school and many of my students are feeling the fatigue that I do. Thank you for your time and consideration. Rosemary Aguilar, I'm a student of the success center. I am there because I don't have the opportunity of being in the morning as normal. I study and I have two jobs, a full and part-time job. Sometimes I don't get on, I don't get on time home. I don't get on time to do classwork, so I do it on weekends when I'm off. I really want to graduate and get my diploma to get a better job and help myself, my family and those who need it. I want to learn more English. Nicole Hubbard, good evening. I have two children at RPS. My oldest is in eighth grade and has autism. She is in collaborative classes. My youngest is in first grade and has autism as well. The schedule is brutal on us parents. How am I supposed to help two kids who both need one-on-one support but are on two different schedules? I don't want anyone in my home for health reasons. Please come up with a better schedule that allows twenty-five minute live instruction only and give students time to complete assignments. Did you guys consider how this schedule would impact exceptional education students? You guys are definitely not providing fate for these for these children. Sarah Ward, I am writing you as a parent of a fifth grader at John B. Carey. My daughter has attended John B. Carey since kindergarten and has absolutely loved it. Today I would like to talk about our virtual learning thus far. We are in our second week of this new adventure so far and I am loving it. My daughter wakes up early so that she is ready for class and she logs in early so she can get some social time with friends. I feel a parent, as a parent, that John B. Carey has done an amazing job getting their students prepared for virtual learning. The staff had multiple days, even on weekends, to distribute equipment and learning materials. Pickup was easy and organized. As far as the first week goes, I feel it went more smoother than anticipated. I was really concerned that my daughter would get distracted and unfocused. Last year I was told that my daughter did not participate as much in class because she always second guessed herself. Ingrid Thomas, I am an English teacher with the Secondary Success Center. One of the benefits of this program is that it allows students that had to drop out of school, for whatever reason, a chance to complete high school. The program's flexibility as it relates to class time allows for our students the ability to complete assignments at any time that is convenient to them. Many of our students have other lives to live and this secondary success center program allows them to finish school alongside earning a paycheck. As a teacher, it gives me great pleasure to serve my students in an alternative learning setting and see them achieve and succeed. Thank you. Carmen Slaton, I'm the parent of a sixth grader and fourth grader. I'm writing to urge the board to reconsider the length and intensity of the length and intensity of the current school day. All of my kids' teachers have been amazing. They are all patient, loving and engaged. However, please don't take this well deserved praise of all the teacher and staff of RPS as an in indignation, indication that the schedule is working. It as it is now, if they are in class for the whole time, my middle schooler's day will be over seven hours long. Even switching from instruction to independent work keeps them on the computer for the entire, for the whole day. And the thirty minute lunch break is only two hours into her day, which puts her from twelve oh five to four twenty with only fifteen minutes of total break time. She has no time for exercise or fresh air, much less time to socialize or do other activities. She loves school. Lanza Gregory, as a part of the staff from RPS success center, one of the things I am most proud of is the flexibility of the schedule for our students. There are some nights where I'm supporting students with their edge annuity assignments and there have been some early mornings where I'm supporting students with their assignments. We have developed relationships where students feel comfortable to contact me even during the weekends. That is the beauty of a flexible schedule where I can serve my students when they need it most. I think that as a teacher, I think that as a teacher committed to my student's success, I should be able to accommodate to their schedules and provide my services as an ESL teacher when required. This will allow them to do both, support their families and obtain a high school diploma. Caitlin Mendez, this year, the L, the LEP team formerly ESL, L I E P team formerly ESL team started a new program, Kongana, supports high school LEAP students who are over age and under credited. The program offers a flexible evening schedule to allow students to continue their obligations outside of academies such as working during the day or night or tending to their children while still earning a high school, while still earning high school credits to work towards graduation. Kongana serves as a preventative program to forty LEAP students who may otherwise be inclined to drop out, especially now during the pandemic. Kongana is giving students an opportunity to continue their education. We currently have a waiting list as more students continue finding out about this opportunity. For years, students who came to our schools with adult responsibilities and little or no. Makisha Robinson, my biggest concern with teaching online is engaging the students for ninety minutes. We have been told to use asynchronous and synchronous learning. However, in the same sentence, we were told to provide bell to bell instruction. That is impossible. I believe the daily schedule for all students should be revisited and changed. Wednesday's schedule works well for me and most importantly, my students. Theodore Dubinsky, is there any reason why students have to be on their computer screens for as much time as being asked? Is there any way to reduce the amount of screen time and or class time and provide students with longer breaks in between classes? Megan Pezzle, I'm a third grade teacher and I'm very concerned about the breakout rooms that were brought up at the RPS live before school started. These are not a safe option for our children. Once students are put into these breakout rooms without a teacher, they are essentially in another classroom unsupervised. Teachers can no longer see or hear what is being said and shown by the students or other people in the home with the students. We cannot intervene if something occurs. We would never send our students into another classroom unattended in the school building. Why are we trying to do it virtually? Small groups are currently not possible without more adults available. If the school day were shortened per the VDOE recommended hours, then teachers could have office hours for students who want it slash need it to come in for more support, either in small group setting or one-to-one. Our current schedule has us maxed out based on the VDOE recommended amount of time per day and week. Kimberly Wolf, I wanted to share our feedback from the first week of virtual RPS at Holton. My child is in the third grade and is in Autumn Demetsch class and our experience has been truly great thus far. Of course, the physical classroom would have been preferred, but I was really impressed at how few tech hiccups we ran into, how quickly and effectively they were dealt with, including some patient teacher to student direct support or small groups for more in-depth help. Or generous communication with parents on class dojo. I do have one of those rare children that doesn't have a hard time sitting still. But that aside, Mr. Metz's manner of establishing a calm and respectful environment and her use of different activities and platforms to engage the students, which she is rolling out incrementally to make sure everyone is up to speed, have all been really successful. We do know of other students in various grades at Holton. That's my last page, Ms. Wilson.
Oh my. The end of public comment. That was the last one. Thank you, Dr. Harris.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
Thank you both and thank you to everyone who wrote in. And I know that we couldn't read all of the comments, but we, we saw them and we have them. And I can assure you that all of them and all of their entirety were very important and will be considered. But we need to continue on. So now we go to Board Action Item 3.01 to receive for a second read and action, Policy Revisions Rated Related to General Assembly and Administration Recommendations. So I don't know which, which one. Is that Ms. Lilly?
Yes, that's me. Good evening, everyone. Basically, this is your second read of the policies that came before you during your last regular meeting. I did not receive any comments or questions in the interim. And now there before you for vote and action tonight.
Okay. Can I hear a motion? We need a motion.
So moved, ma'am chair.
All right.
Back it.
And has moved.
Back it.
Page has seconded that we approve the policy revisions related to the General Assembly and Administration Recommendations. Is there discussion? I do not see any in the chat. All right, then let us move to the vote.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Ms. Paige.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
And Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, well, that was nice. Moving on to 3.02, the Personnel Actions.
I'll present those this evening. Good, good evening. Tonight, I bring to you the nomination of 19 employees, the change of contract of 49 employees, the resignation of 13 employees, the retirement of two employees, the rescission of employment by two employees, the non-renewal of two employees and the name change of seven employees.
All right. Colleagues, you have had the opportunity to look at these on Board Docs. Is there a motion to approve the Personnel Actions?
I'm moved.
Ms. Burke has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barlow has seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, let us move to the vote.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Same.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Sapini.
No.
Ms. Cosby.
No.
Ms. Paige.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
And Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes. Six-two.
Dr. Sapini, was yours a yes or a no?
No.
Okay, so.
Dr. Sapini and Ms. Cosby voted no, is what I have, and Ms. Gibson abstained.
Okay, thank you. All right, then the proposed salary schedule, which seemed to be a whole lot besides the instructional assistants and assistant principals.
Yes, I can go over the highlights for those two roles. Good evening again. While you'll see the entire salary schedule is updated inclusive of the two new scales that the board requested, let me give you a little bit of information on both. So for our instructional assistants, effective October 1st, the proposed new salary schedule includes one classification of instructional assistants. So the current schedule had three levels on different pay grades depending on educational background. This increased all levels and provides stipends for associate, bachelor's and master's degrees of instructional assistance. The new salary schedule includes a decompression that creates a step for every year of service, so one year of credit given for any year of service in an instructional assistant or relevant role. The new starting salary is 6% higher than any of our neighboring school divisions. The steps with, that are part of the decompression are the uniform 1.17% step increase. That's the differential between years of service and is our standard step now for all of our decompressed roles. And a minimum of a 3% raise wherever the instructional assistant landed after the decompression. For our assistant principals, effective October 1st, 2020, the proposed salary schedule would also, per board request, include a decompression that creates a step for every year of service. Again, this would be the uniform 1.17% step for each service. There is no change to the starting salary of the scale as RPS current AP salaries are 5.5% higher already than any neighboring school divisions. All assistant principals, though, will still see a minimum of a 3% raise in this new scale with the decompression. And there is an option for contract length adjustment. So there is an opt-in period to become a 12-month contracted employee for this year for the 2020-21 school year. And in the 21-22 school year, the assistant principal contract would shift to be a 12-month contract. So those new scales are reflected within the document and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, Mrs. Gibson would like to move, so has a motion, so Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to move that we vote on this at our next meeting. I, I just want to ensure that, that staff members that are being impacted by this and the community have had, you know, a sufficient amount of time to, to review the documentation. And I, I would think that by our next meeting, you know, we would be in a good place to be able to ensure that, that those changes are, are good to go.
We're minimal to that. Thank you.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, that was Mr. Barlow. Okay, so Ms. Gibson made the motion to vote on this at the next meeting and Mr. Barlow has seconded. Is there discussion? Dr. Sapini has a question. And then Ms. Paige.
So are we still discussing it tonight, right?
Yes.
But then voting next time or just discussing and voting next?
Well, I believe we can discuss it now and, and then vote on the motion. I mean, if, and then if there's further discussion next time, we would, that would be appropriate. Okay? Ms. Paige. Dr. Sapini, I'm sorry, you have another question?
Pertaining to this, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I'm not next in line, then am I next or?
No, you're, you're first in line, Dr. Sapini. Go forth.
Okay. On page 31, my question is, are you able to explain why is that when you go from grade 130 to 131, starting at step five, how come it starts to decrease?
Sorry, what page did you say? 30? I'm just pulling it up.
31.
31. In grade, which grade? Which, which grade, I'm sorry?
When you look at 130 and 130.1, starting at step five, seems like there's a decrease. I'll check and see. Are you able to explain what that is?
So you mean, oh, in step, it's 74,684 in step five and then in 130.1, it's 74,577?
Right.
This is the, and, and I'll need to, I want to double-check with the finance team, but the point one is the, the new scale, which has the standard step of 1.17. Some of our other scales are not as consistent as we would want them to be. So my understanding is this is the, the accurate 1.17, excuse me, percent step, but I'll double-check that.
So just so I understand, so does that mean if, let it, someone, is that one at 130? Let's say during step five, six, or whatever have you, and then they're, I guess, technically increasing to 131, that salary would go down?
No, although I see, I, I absolutely see your point. Because unfortunately, most people in this grade are, are not appropriately decompressed, everyone will see a minimum of a 3% raise and most people will land on a step different than the one they are on now. They had not moved off of that step in some instances for several years. So if all things were staying equal, the new 1.17% would, would create that variance, but everyone is moving up on the steps.
Okay, Dr. Sapini.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Paige.
Excuse me. Yes, so my question is, is this time-sensitive? Does decompression pay for our instructional assistants and assistant principals? Is it time-sensitive? And also, what is the timeline that this information, we've had this discussion? And when it has, you know, regarding the information being presented?
Sure. It's time-sensitive only in so much that when the board approved its budget back in May, you had asked for the salary scale to be implemented October 1st. So this allowed us two board meetings today and then next week's for the board's review of the scale. We had not yet brought the content of the scale but used the same guiding principles as we had for nurses and principals, which was to ensure that we were the highest-paying starting salary of any neighboring division and then some, which we are for both of these scales. Again, 5.6% higher than any neighboring division for assistant principals and 6% higher than any neighboring division for instructional assistants. We also use the same guiding principle of the 1.17% step that is now in place for teachers, principals, nurses, custodians and, it escapes me what the other role is that we did this spring. Jason, do you remember what the other role is that we did this spring?
Counselors?
No, they're already on a teacher's contract. Well, it escapes me now, but the, the step is, is that same guiding principle. So given the board's past agreement with those, we applied those in, in this instance.
So receiving this information at the next meeting, voting would not have any impact on what we agreed to with the decompression salary for those staff members being affected by this?
No, the only, I guess, change would be is if the board did not accept the salary scale and we needed to go back to the drawing board, we would have a short amount of time before the October 1st deadline. Unless the board opted to extend that.
Thank you.
Dr. Sapini.
One more quick question. I will ensure you listed all the other positions. Were, were substitute teachers also included or no? Or is there a change for substitutes?
No, that unfortunately was not in the board's final budget.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I see no further discussion. So at this time, we will vote on the motion to postpone the vote on this until next week. The motion having been made by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Barlow. Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Mrs. Paige.
Ms. Paige.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. So this motion is to delay the vote until next meeting with the opportunity to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr. Ms. Dorr.
You're on mute? Yes, yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
And Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'm reminded of Rodney Robinson's observation that the phrase of the year is, "You're on mute." Okay, moving on.
Me again.
Budget transfers, okay.
Yes, good evening again. Tonight, you'll see one budget transfer brought before you. This is the opportunity to transfer funds from our contracted services for occupational and physical therapists to, for, in the same amount, to be able to hire two RPS occupational therapists and physical therapists. Having more in-house staff, of course, is ultimately a cost savings over paying for contracted services. And with this change, there is, of course, no reduction or change in services to our students.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this budget transfer?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that was Mr. Barlow, made the motion, and Ms. Paige that seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let us have the vote.
Okay. Ms. Paige.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Do we have any travel and activity, district activity requests, Ms. Wilson?
We do. We had one from Mrs. Burke. She wanted to attend the new board chair and vice chair orientation that was held on, I believe, August 31st. And we did register her for that with the understanding that if it was not approved, she would have to bear the cost of that, but the cost was $250.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Burke's request? Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Burke's request?
So moved.
Mr. Barlow? Is there a second? Ms. Page seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let us have the vote.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
abstaining.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. All right, then moving on to administration business, we begin with our update on the facilities use agreement for virtual learning. Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to see all of you. Just to briefly update, we had submitted a draft MOU to the city last week. I want to thank Ms. Lilly for her work on so quickly putting that together and getting it over to the city. It was a lot of effort to capture everything that the board had outlined in our previous discussion, so thank you so much. We had a conversation with the city this morning indicating that the city attorney office, Ms. Wilson, if you can mute, that would be great, thanks, has recommended that the city not enter into an MOU with RPS for the emergency childcare, but rather that RPS enter into agreements with each of the providers itself. And so I had asked Ms. Lilly to connect with the city attorney today. She did so, so she may be able to add a little bit more context from a legal perspective. But that is where we are now. So I don't know if Ms. Owen or Ms. Burke, who are also part of the conversation this morning, would like to add any additional context or Ms. Lilly, based on your conversation. Really, the question before the board now is if the board would be willing to enter into these agreements directly with the providers. The ones that have been identified so far are Peter Paul, RBHA, and the YMCA.
Well, I would say that we just are not ready to decide that. And I, I look forward to hearing from Ms. Lilly and considering what this means for all of us. That's, that's, that's what I have to say. What about you, Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I see that Mrs. Cosby just asked a question. And that pretty much, I think we do need to share what she asked regarding, what was the rationale?
Okay.
So, Mr. Superintendent?
Sure, I was just responding to Mr. Cameras asking if we had anything.
Basically. Okay, that's, that's fine. You can go ahead and move with their questions. Because I do have a couple of concerns, but I prefer speaking after John L. gives her, Ms. Lilly gives her report. Because we asked the question, what did the neighboring counties have? And it's, from what I understood, it was stated that their MOUs were in place with, with, as you were there, with those agencies or providers per se, and not with the county itself. So, a lot of concerns. I'd like to hear what Ms. Lilly stated as well.
Good evening again. I've been speaking with the city attorney's representative. Basically, the, it boils down to the city, since the city is not the entity that's going to be running the centers, they're not recommending to, the city attorney's office is not recommending to the city that they sign an agreement that would potentially make them liable for childcare, following childcare regulations and those types, because they will not be the entity that is in the building. And so that's a very simplified summary of a, of the conversation. They are open, they see themselves as the facilitator of providing the grants to the providers and then linking the providers, or, or I guess linking the providers to you all as the people responsible, the entity responsible for the facilities. I mean, you all, if you would like to move forward with this, can exercise your, your right to, to rent, quote unquote, and, and way fees and all that, the facilities, just as you would anyone else, any other provider, and we would have to tailor those agreements to account for COVID concerns and account for some of the things that, you know, the pandemic has highlighted. But you have that as an option. But at this point in time, the city is not going to sign off on, on the MOU, really, any iteration of it, because there is no, they, they don't see themselves in the contractual line, if you will, between you all and the provider.
All right, Ms. Cosby, does that answer your question about the rationale?
Yes, 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 it does.
Okay. Ms. Door, and then Ms. Page, and then Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Gibson?
So, I'm a little confused as to what we're being asked right now. But I think, and Ms. Lilly and Mr. Cameras, if you could tell me if I'm wrong, what we're being asked to give guidance on right now is whether we want to task the administration to see if they can sign, or if we are willing to sign individual MOUs with the three providers outlined, Peter Paul, YMCA, and I forgot the other one. Is that what we're being asked?
In essence, yes. So just to kind of simplify everything, during our previous discussion, the way we had framed this was, we provide the facilities, and the city would run the programs through the other entities. And therefore, we would need an MOU with the city to make that happen. Now, it's clear the city, based on the conversations we've had, is not in a position to sign the MOU. So yes, the question before the board quite simply is, is the board comfortable entering into an agreement directly with each of the providers? And in essence, we would be taking then a more active role in the oversight and administration of these centers in that we would be the direct, the direct partner. There would be no intermediary of the city. And so it just changes the dynamic a little bit. And I wanted to just see where the board was on this. We do not need to make a decision tonight. We have another meeting next week, so there's certainly time for the board to think and process a little bit. I myself, and Ms. Owen and Ms. Burke just received this information this morning, so we're still processing it as well.
Based on that, Ms. Owen, based on that guidance, my perspective is I'd like to understand more about specifically what that changes about the dynamic and sort of what RPS then would be responsible, more responsible for. But I would say that if there's a way to uphold the spirit of the original MOU with the city, I would be amenable to signing individual MOUs, provided that, you know, one, we, we get to see them, and two, that they're all the same, and three, that it's, you know, generally in the spirit of original MOU with the city. So that's my two cents. I agree with Ms. Owen that we probably need some more information specifically around the point that you just made, Mr. Cameras.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Door, Ms. Page, then Mr. Barlow, Ms. Gibson, Dr. Sapini, and Ms. Cosby.
Okay, I concur with my colleague, Ms. Door. Yes, we, we need more information. How does this change the dynamics of this agreement? And yes, if we, you know, going to an agreement with the various providers, yes, it should be the same, but also laying out what the expectations, expectations, the school system, the provider. Yes, we need more information before, before I can make a definitive decision. But I mean, yes, keep it in the spirit in what the original plan was to serve our families who are in need of childcare as, you know, they have to go to work. I totally support that. Yes, so I'm looking forward to more information.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've got a question that will likely be followed by a comment. But who, so who selected these entities to be partners and to receive funds, CARES Act funds, to help implement these programs in RPS schools?
The city.
Okay. So, you know, I, first and foremost, what's most important to me is, is safety of, of the kids in these buildings. And, you know, last time, I didn't vote to move forward with the partnership because, because I wanted to, to make sure some of this was ironed out. But, you know, I am supportive of the concept to the degree that we can ensure student, or the safety of kids in these facilities. But I'm a little perplexed and a little frustrated, to be honest with you. My expectation is that the city played an active role in, in setting up these partnerships. My expectation was that the city would play an active role in, in maintaining these partnerships. It does change the, the fundamental nature of what I think we were asked initially in this process, which was to merely provide space. And we said we are willing to provide space so long as, you know, certain conditions are met. You know, requiring that, that we manage that, that we oversee these programs to ensure that they're complying with these MOUs does change the, the nature of this. So, you know, I'm not ruling it out entirely, but I am, I'm a little frustrated by this, because I, I don't, that's not the expectation that I feel that we receive from the city. And I do want to make sure that we're in a position to partner with the city and with other stakeholders, to the extent that it serves our, our students and our, our kids in the area well. But, but I, I thought there was an opportunity for us to, to move forward a little bit more swiftly and, and to ensure safety of our kids and childcare for our kids. And I definitely agree that we need to take a closer look at this. And, you know, it is, it is a little weird to me that, you know, I'm not sure how the selection process occurred on the city side entirely. But I do think that to the extent that the city decided that we're going to partner with certain organizations, and I respect these organizations, don't get me wrong, but to the extent that the city decided that, they should have some skin in the game with respect to administering the program.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm tired today, so I'm, I'm admittedly going to be more blunt than I would like to be. But, you know, Mr. Barlow, you know, put it well. Right, this evening, I'm feeling, I, I don't like to say this, but I'm feeling like I told you so. I mean, this is, this is, um, this is, this is embarrassing. You know, I mean, so I was concerned when we met last that the vote that we were going to make was essentially a symbolic vote, because we didn't have enough information. I expressed concern that, because we hadn't done the work, that it felt more about headlines than about really getting something done. I mean, so basically, what we're being told is that the, the city, the mayor made a grand announcement that they wanted to offer childcare in our school buildings for essential workers, and now does not want to be involved in any of the contract. That, and so, and now, you know, there are lots of questions that we're not prepared to move forward with, because we don't have answers. So we've, we've said we're going to prove something that now we're saying we need more information about. And so, you know, I'm a mom, and this is, this is, you know, I occasionally I have those moments where I'm like, I told you so. That's how I feel. So my request is, I, I have some disappointment that we issued an MOU to the city without, and I don't believe that it's been, it was shared with the board first. So I, I would still like to see the document if it was shared. I, I don't recall. But if, regardless, I do think it also would be, that would be something worth having public review before being shared with, being sent to the city. I think that I want to see us figure something out. Now we've got folks in the city who are depending and hopeful about this thing happening. And, and regardless of, you know, who started it, we need to figure something out. And, and so my request is that the administration, if you could share whatever the agreements are that we've have in place for those childcare providers that have been using the school facilities for after-school programs, such as the Y, if, if that could be shared at our, our next meeting so that we can look at that as, as a starting point and, and see what the, you know, how that might be modeled to reflect something for, for this scenario. And, and frankly, you know, I, I say, you know, either it's, it's, it's going to be our thing, or it's going to be their thing. And it, it feels to me like this is now our thing. And, and I think that it should fall in one way or the other, because otherwise, stuff's going to fall through the cracks, and, and there are going to be issues. You know, I, I, I still have some hesitation about, you know, how this is coming together and, and the safety of all of it. But, but that paired with the fact that, you know, now, now, after we've said yes, we're still, you know, asking for more details. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a frustrated mama right now.
Okay, thank you. So now, Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Cosby, Ms. Burke, Mr. Young, and Ms. Page?
Ms. Lilly wanted to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, I just wanted to make it clear, and Mr. Cameras can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the draft was in a draft form, so I don't want the board members or public to, to think that an MOU was issued. It was still in the discussion phase, phase, rather. And the intent was to gather the comment and comments and feedback from the city so that you all could have that in your consideration, as well as a draft, in the, incorporated in the draft. So this was just simply an initial draft that has not gone anywhere, because the city's feedback this morning was that it wasn't going to move it forward. But the intention was to bring their comments and to you all as a document so that we're not, you know, understanding the time sensitivity, sensitivity of this all. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Then Dr. Sapini, Ms. Cosby, Ms. Burke, Mr. Young, Ms. Page?
No, my, my two preceding board members already said what I was going to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Cosby?
I share my colleagues' frustration. And the words of Malcolm X, "It feels like we've been hoodwinked and bamboozled." And so, you know, I, I was the first to say, hey, we do whatever we can, and I'm still feeling that way. However, 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 you know, there was a, a sense of comfort when we talked about liability. And this is all that it's boiling down to. You know, who's going to take on, um, the most liability for this? And so, um, but, you know, these are our, uh, students first and foremost. I'm sorry, I agree with my colleague, um, Ms. Gibson, that we just have to decide, you know, we, we, we've made a commitment. We got to decide how we're going to make it work and make sure that we are protecting, ensuring safety first and foremost of our students and our school personnel. So, um, but this is, this is very concerning. Because we spent, there were, there were a couple of weeks, and I'm using couple very conservatively, there were a number of weeks between the time when the city came to ask for this ask and when we go back to them and now they've made a decision that we're not, that they will not enter into an MOU. And that's really concerning to me. Um, and I do believe, you know, as Ms. Gibson put, either this is going to be us or is going to be, we will work through everything, decide on the partners, all that good stuff, or the city will. And I do think it behooves us to have an additional conversation with the city about this decision.
Okay. All right. Um, Ms. Burke, then Mr. Young, Ms. Page, and Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Lilly, for clarifying a few items. As stated, Ms. Cosby just stated as well, I'm in full agreement, and I understood the last meeting when we voted to prepare spaces for our children that, um, we didn't have all the details, but I, I did leave the table, understanding that, um, there would be items of which to be worked out. And our direction was to have an MOU. Now, when we have after-school programs with the Y or, um, Boys and Girls Club or whatever, there's an MOU in place for that usually. Is that correct, Ms., Ms. Lilly? Where are you?
That is correct. There is an agreement that exists. So we can, there is a, a format that we can, we can use and update as I suggested earlier.
So having been a part of that for years, usually that organization, for instance, the Y has, uses a lot of schools now in the after-school program. So the liability piece usually falls upon that, um, organization or nonprofit that's utilizing the space. So I don't have a problem with going back to the table to work this out, but I do know that we have a lot of students and parents that want the support and help. So, um, I have two questions. Number one, what exactly would be our role now, however it unfolds, or whomever's in the schools, which now we can get another school we want, I'm not saying we have to. Because from what I understand, the money would be given to those organizations as grants to move forward with the space within rich and public schools or elsewhere. For instance, the Y has two programs at two churches as well that's already gotten started. Um, so, but also, my question to the administration is, in that MOU now, because we are, um, we'll be renting the buildings out, let's say, will someone on our team then have to go in and out to monitor to make sure COVID is followed? I mean, it needs to be, even though it's our space and those agencies or whatever would be held accountable for the safety piece, but we still would need someone, is that correct, to monitor to make sure things are done as expected? Or, uh, is that hands-off? And will that be in the MOU?
I think we would likely want to have some oversight, as you suggest. Now, it's a legal question, and I would defer to Ms. Lilly, as to whether we bear any additional liability as the direct partner with one of the providers as opposed to the city being, uh, that partner. So I, I just don't know that. Um, I don't know if as part of the MOU, the partner takes on 100% of the liability and that absolves RPS. Uh, that's really a question that Ms. Lilly would have to answer.
In any, in any of the agreements, um, in the proposed agreement for, between the city, there, there would be language, um, in the agreement that would require the entity to identify the school board for any actions that may be taken against it. Um, you know, for any, any negligences, any omissions, any acts of those types of things. Um, I, like I said, we could use as the basis the, uh, existing partnership agreements that we have with some of those entities. They, those, those agreements would need to be updated to, um, address COVID concerns. Um, we did have in the draft MOU, um, with the city, the, the requirement that the, the provider be responsible for daily cleanings. Because again, the idea was that the school board was not going to bear the cost of any of those things. I don't know, and that's a question that we have to kind of discuss, um, whether or not that burden would shift. I don't see why it needed, needs to. But again, I don't know, um, you know, the, the cost and, and the assessment of all that. But anyway, for the liability purposes, we would have language in those, in the agreement that would require the entity to identify the school board. We would require them to, um, show certificates of, excuse me, not certificates of occupancy, certificates of insurance, which would name the school board as an additional insured, um, so that we would know that they had insurances in place, those types of things. Um, but, um, we, we would work out those other details, but that's, that's a high level of what we would do to kind of shield you all from, from liability.
Madam Chair, if I may finish, um, so I am in agreement is, as we move forward with discussion, that Ms. Lilly will revisit that MOU if we really even have to do that to that extent and use the similar paperwork we've used in the past, as she stated to update that. And that at the next meeting, we'll look at all of that, maybe that's put out beforehand and, and then move forward from there. Because we, I'm just thinking about all the different organizations that utilize our schools from day to day, evening to evening. So, um, usually the liability, I know from what I've seen in the past, and Ms. Lilly knows how to phrase that, but I'm in favor of moving forward so that we can get these babies in place by October or mid-October or whatever, but, but also to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe. And, um, so I look forward on the 21st, this coming, coming Monday, seeing what's, um, what's in place so we can move forward because parents are anxious to register and move forward, but they can't move forward if we have, if we haven't decided what's going to be done. And that the liability will fall upon, I don't want anybody to get sick at all, but being realistic, things happen. Things happen, so, but I also know the precautions as well. So my suggestion and recommendation is that we, um, move forward with the information of which Ms. Lilly will bring to the next meeting, which technically isn't brand new, but will have to be updated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Burke, Mr. Young, then Ms. Page, and Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't per se disagree with any of what any of my colleagues have, have shared, but, um, but I would, uh, would hate for the city attorney's office and/or any legal brinksmanship to get in the way of us providing critical support to those families desperate in need. Uh, that, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Page, then Ms. Gibson.
Yes, um, I'm not going to restate, you know, what we have all said, but, um, yes, I totally agree. We need to move forward and however, it is dis- concerning, disappointing. Um, but the whole time, we are waiting to make a decision. Our parents are, our parents are dependent on us to provide, you know, a site for, to provide childcare and, um, our parents, they struggling. Our parents need a safe and secure place to provide, so that they, they can have childcare for their children so that they can go to work. But I just want to make sure that whatever providers, plans that we have going forward, that it totally supports the needs, the families with the most needs. Because, you know, the providers, because it seems like we're going to be more involved, but I want to ensure that providers that's in the heart of our communities are given the opportunity so they can provide childcare for our children. Um, I just want to make, I want to make sure of that. Because we have these places, I'm not finished. We have these places that, um, you know, may serve families that, you know, really may not have as much of a need as some other communities, and I want to make sure that equity, equity is there as far as our providers, making sure that they are providing those services for our children. So I'm looking forward to receiving the information so that we can move forward because our parents are dependent on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so to anyone who thinks it's important that we ensure that there's sufficient equity in this, um, I ask my colleagues to support, uh, the, ensuring that we get answers to the questions that I submitted prior to our last board meeting. Um, I asked a number of questions that, that got at those, you know, items that would ensure that there is sufficient equity in the program. Um, I caution my colleagues at the same time that we put so much emphasis on the need of our parents to, to have childcare. The parents depend on us to educate their kids. That's first and foremost. Um, and, uh, and the reason why we're not in schools is because there is a critical safety issue going on. Um, I would remind us all that we've received, uh, notifications this week of more than one incident of an employee that's gotten, uh, that's gotten sick. We should take that very seriously as we consider how we're going to move forward. I can tell you for one, um, I will not vote on a proposal that does not specify how we define the essential worker. Um, you know, we should all be staying home. We should encourage everyone to stay home. And, um, and I, and I know that we have folks that, um, you know, that, that, that need support, um, that, uh, that are defined as such, but otherwise, we should encourage everyone to stay home and to stay safe so that our community stays safe. So that is of critical importance to me as we consider, uh, moving forward, um, and, and getting answers to those questions and seeing the documentation. Because essentially, you know, what happened was, you know, this was a city thing until we said, let's put it down on paper, and then they backed away. So, um, you know, whether we have been identified or not, we're taking a vote on this, and we need to ensure that, um, that we are truly protecting, uh, the interests of our students before proceeding with, uh, a proposal that, um, that, uh, could have repercussions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Burke.
Um, yes, Madam Chair, I think, um, Mrs. Page just covered pretty much what I was stating as well, but I wanted to go back to her question regarding neighborhood support. That is something the city stated that after next week, they will follow up with that regarding the, um, let's say some churches in the community that's, that's already started. Just so we can let our parents know that they, uh, once the city approves, just as what Ms. Lilly stated about the insurance piece and having the ample HVAC systems or whatever else that's needed, that there will be parts or small groups per the parents' request. And some churches have already started. I know over here in the East End, um, one has already started with elementary, middle, and high in small groups. So, um, but there will be regard beyond the school piece of, um, neighborhood places that will offer support for our children to make sure they stay on task and also enjoy and have that one-on-one support. We must be mindful also, um, that a lot of our, our families have challenging situations in terms of in their neighborhoods or whatever, and not have the, the peace or the support that they want to do well, the desires to do well, the parents want them to do well, but everyone doesn't have that comfort there. So I'm delighted that there are churches here in the East End that's already started with that, and they know the neighborhood children, and the children live in public housing, and they want to be there. So, um, I'm, I'm delighted to hear that part. So that is coming, Ms. Page, in regards to her question. That hasn't been put off the table. Thank you. But that will be a different responsibility for us. Yeah. But we won't be overseeing that. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any further comments. And since I wasn't at the last meeting, I would like to, to just quickly share my, um, deep disappointment here. I, I, I have been all along about the schools for the kids, and we should be teaching in the schools if it's safe to do that. And if it's not safe to do that for our kids, especially the kids who really need us in person, then I am very reluctant to have kids in our buildings. That's me, but I also understand the needs of essential workers. I'm interested to hear how we're going to, again, as was expressed, how that is defined. Um, I do feel that there is definitely work to be sure that these are people who really need assistance. Um, so I'm, I'm glad of that. So there's a lot of work to do in a very short amount of time. And, um, I know that people have asked me, for example, if the city is interested, can the cities got recreation centers and libraries and spaces, um, the convention center, you know? I mean, so again, let's have this conversation with the city about the whole thing. And that's my comment. And so now I guess we will revisit this next week. All right? Any, anybody else? I don't mean to cut off anyone else, but I didn't see anybody else who had commented. So we will receive a school opening report.
Thank you, Ms. Owen, and again, good evening, everybody. Um, I, I will be relatively brief, uh, given that, uh, the hour is getting late. Uh, let me just say first, a huge, huge thank you to our teachers and our principals and our custodians and bus drivers and food and nutrition team and counselors and social workers and volunteers and so many other folks. I think, as you heard from public comment and really from all the shout-outs, uh, we had another, uh, three dozen-plus shout-outs tonight. Um, our folks, the team, they're just doing incredible work, and I'm so, so proud. Uh, I really do think because of the incredible efforts of, uh, everybody pulling together, we really were able to reopen with love. Um, as I shared on Friday, uh, I think this is one of our finest moments, and I've never been prouder, uh, than I am right now to be affiliated with RPS. I just think, um, the team has done extraordinary things, and, um, it's really, uh, I think, been one of our shining moments. So I just want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to our families who have, uh, been partnering with us every step of the way. Uh, and I say that, uh, superintendent, but also as a dad who knows, um, the, the stresses that come with, uh, launching a virtual school system. And so, uh, to all of the families, the caregivers, um, everybody who's helping out, neighbors and relatives and godparents and big brothers and sisters who are all assisting, um, I want you to know that we, we recognize you, we see you, we appreciate you, we love you, we're grateful to you, and, um, we're just so, uh, happy to be able to, to partner with you. And then last, our, our, uh, community friends, our volunteers, partner organizations who've stepped up. Uh, we really couldn't have done any of this without you, and so thank you as well. Uh, all in all, I think it was a very- All in all, I think it was a very successful first week. As we heard tonight and as I shared in RPS Direct, we certainly have gotten feedback around our schedules. We take that very seriously. And so as I shared tonight, I've asked for additional feedback from folks. I would like to hear what's working, what's not working, not just about the schedules, about anything. We'll look at all of that. And then hopefully next week I'll have a little bit more to share about how we're thinking about the schedules and if any adjustments seem to make sense. I do want us to move with urgency, but also with, I want us to be deliberate and not cause new issues by making sudden changes. So my goal over the next week is to gather as much feedback as I possibly can, not just from, from families and teachers, but from our administrators as well. As I shared in my RPS Direct, it would be particularly helpful for families on the South Side and the East End who I have not heard as much from to share your perspective. As always, folks can email me at jcameras@rvaschools.net or reach out to your schools and let them know and they can share information. And as I said, next week when we reconvene, I'll have a little bit more to share on that front. And look, this is the, the first time doing 100% virtual for all of us. And I think the, the, the real important posture to take throughout this entire semester, or however long it goes, is that we continue to assess and iterate and get better and better and stronger and stronger. And so that's what we're going to do. So thank you to everybody who has written in. And thank you in advance to everybody else who, who will write in to share your perspectives. Last, I'll just wrap up and then glad to take any questions. I just want to thank our kids. I've had the chance to pop into a number of classrooms. And I, I wish I could leap out of the screen and give them a big hug, but I'm so thrilled by what they're doing. They definitely look very cute with those headphones that we've given out. I'm so proud of them. We love them so much. And I'm just really impressed by what they've already accomplished and so excited about what they will accomplish this year. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions.
Okay. Mr. Barlow, Mr. Young, Ms. Dorr, and Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Camus, thank you for the update. This, this, this week in particular has been one of the weeks I think I've been most proud to be a member of the RPS family. I'm, I'm really just blown away with the feedback that I'm getting about the quality of care that our teachers are putting into their work. I've, I've checked in with a few principals this week who, who all seemed pleased and in some cases even pleasantly surprised about how well we handled the, the virtual rollout, the number of students who are logging in. I do look forward to getting some more information about our attendance figures and where we may be able to, to make adjustments in those respects. But, you know, if I'm thinking about the sort of RPS tagline of resilience, pride, and success, I think we've shown resilience and we've certainly shown our pride this week. And I know that we're committed to, to success. So with that in mind, you know, I brought it up on a couple of meetings this summer about concerns about screen time. I know that the administration had committed to making adjustments where, where they may need to be made to, to accommodate the, the needs of our students in the classroom and our teachers in the classroom. So I'm glad to hear that, that you're going to be looking further into it. My opinion at this point is that I would like to see some more creative thinking and a reduction in particular with respect to the, the amount of screen time that our students are experiencing on a day-to-day basis. But I know that we want to hear from other stakeholders as well. When I, when I first, when I first graduated law school, I ended up working for a company where I helped students prepare for the bar exam in, in an online format. And it was pretty clear that sort of having short bursts of videos followed by, you know, periods of more interactive content really did help, help keep students more engaged. And, and that burnout happens, even with, you know, folks who've gone all the way through law school, you know, doing a lot of instructional content. So I know that we've got work to do as a district and I'm sure our teachers and our principals will be thinking of ways to, to make modifications on, on those levels as well. But I do think that some central office leadership on, on how to, to reduce some of that burden that we've heard from a number of members of the community about would go a long way. And I just do, I also want to thank, thank our incredible teachers. I know a lot of extra work has gone into preparing for the school year. I want to thank the administration. I have been on the phone with a number of you this week and hear you driving all over the city, dropping off devices, doing everything that we can to ensure that we're starting off the school year in a strong manner. And just let us know how we can continue to be supportive as a board. And, and my, also my hope for the public is that they will chime in to an even greater degree to put forward a thoughtful discussion about how we can improve virtual instruction in a, in an unprecedented time. So thank you to everyone. Thanks for making RPS so proud.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow, Mr. Young, Ms. Dorr, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, I have a lot of questions, but I'll abbreviate them in respect for, for my colleagues and in the interest of time. But first I went to, like my colleague and the superintendent began by conveying my admiration, respect, and, and awe really at, and how well everything went and is going. And, and I think that's a testament first and foremost to our amazing 2,000 teachers and our staff, but also to our students and families. So kudos, job well done, all the way around. Like, like Scott alluded to or inquired about a moment ago, do we have, Mr. Superintendent, do we have data yet relevant to attendance? And I know we're going to have a conversation later about what VDOE is providing, some recommendations specific to attendance. But do we, do we have some, some raw data relevant to login? And, and what that may look like in the big picture, kind of 50,000 foot and/or, and I'm sure likely to speak for all my colleagues when I say, and, and we perhaps don't have subgroup data yet, but I know I'll be very interested in, in, in what that subgroup data may look like. For example, K2 vis a vis 3.5 or et cetera. So that'd be my first, my first question, just what, what kind of attendance or login data do we have? And, and I'll abbreviate my, my questions for now, but I, I do want to log up the floor briefly. And not unlike Mr. Barlow referenced, I hope that we will, and this is just my two cents. I hope that we will, like so many folks encourage us to do to, to provide, what I characterize as radical deference for our teachers. Everyone knows I believe in autonomy for teachers. But I think more than ever that radical deference as it relates to the schedule and in each, each classroom and each student and each teacher will, will be different. And I hope that will count for that during these, during these circumstances. But my question regards that login and what that has looked like. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Gibson, Ms. Page?
So I echo what my colleagues have said about the excellent, excellent job that you and the administration and our teachers and administrators have pulled off over the past couple of days. It's, I've been very, very, very impressed. And so I, we appreciate you. So thank you for all of the sleepless nights. As I said last week or two weeks ago, I think that no one really knows how to do this. This is unprecedented. And so I hope that we as a board can empower you all to not seek constructive criticism as our critique, but more of as, as an opportunity for us to get better and change in real time. So often in, in schools, we don't earn public service. We don't have the ability to move quickly. And I think we're proving all of that wrong. And so I think we have the opportunity to respond quickly and try new things and fail quickly and fail forward. So with that, you know, obviously you've heard a lot from the public comments about desire to have a shorter day. I think some of that has also, I've seen, depends on the, the teacher and the administration and the coaching and the tenure of the teacher. So, you know, I've noticed just a, you know, anecdotal trend of newer teachers not feeling as comfortable to quote unquote, break the rules as more tenured teachers. And so I know that, that teachers are going to be receiving professional development this week that encourages them not to sit in front of Zoom and talk at kids for seven hours. But I do think that we need to make sure that that message gets translated down and that we are offering creative opportunities. And I know that you guys know this, are offering creative opportunities for breaks. I do think, so I think I see the shorter day feedback as two things. One is how do we work within the existing schedule to be creative about breaks? But then two, do we really need to rethink the schedule in general? I've heard a lot from at the middle school level, just ending so late in the day feels like a really long day. And I've heard at the elementary school level, especially for K through two, that it's just really challenging. So I agree with, you know, not wanting to make changes too quickly, but I would like to see some options around that. And then, or some continued monitoring around that. And kind of related to monitoring and feedback, I would love to see a way to get some structured feedback. So often, you know, you kind of sift through your inbox and you sort of get a, a pulse based on what emails you're getting. But I do think, you know, to the extent we can leverage some, and maybe we have them, Dr. Harris, so I'm not, apologize if I'm speaking out of turn, but some surveys where we can, you know, collect district information, school information, grade information, and then maybe some of the common things that we want feedback on so that we can respond and react in a data-driven way. And then my other request or suggestion is, I have also heard from some children that are, that have changed schools, either because they've moved or because they've recently been rezoned. And just, I think that, you know, the rezoning took so much focus of last year and we kind of moved on to pandemic planning. But for those kids that have changed schools, I would love just to put a plug that they might need a little bit of extra support and would love the administration's thoughts about how we can, you know, wrap our arms around those kiddos.
Okay, Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I want to, you know, I'm, I'm a parent and, and I have been so amazed by the teachers that my son in particular has had. And so, you know, that, that has really been really, you know, it's not often that you get to spend essentially every day with your kid at school. And there are some things that are very, very challenging, but there are also some things that have been a blessing in that. But I, I want to ensure that, you know, we are continuing to do our work as a board. And, you know, in our last conversation, our last agenda item, we spoke very specifically about the impact of moving forward with stuff and not doing our homework and getting that documentation. And this year is the first year that we've had an agenda item that was about, you know, reopening schools and we've gotten no document. You know, typically we get some, something that kind of provides an overview on transportation and all of those things. And this year in specific, there's so much going on. You know, there is some concrete information that needs to be shared. And I, you know, I, oftentimes I feel that I'm asking a lot of questions. And particularly now that we've been meeting virtual, those questions sort of float into the ether and, but I, I think I need to get some answers. And I, and I think it's important that if someone could, could go and look these things up, these are important things to find out. Mr. Young asked some important questions in terms of attendance. That is of particular interest to me. There was an article, I believe, that was shared in the Richmond Times-Dispatch that was later retracted or pulled that spoke to attendance numbers. And I think it is upon us to ensure that the, you know, whatever accurate information is, is out there. So we know how many students attended on the first day of school and the second day of school and what those numbers look like. I also think that, you know, as we're talking right now about opening schools, I, it is remiss that we're not talking about the fact that we've had staff members that have, that have gotten sick. And we need to have a conversation about that. I mean, I don't understand how we could be in this meeting right now and not be talking about the fact that we've had staff members that have gotten sick. And it's particularly close to me because these are people that, you know, work in my community. We were told that these are people that work in transportation, but I believe that these are people that deliver meals. And so they're not just people that work in our communities. They're people that potentially could have, could have interacted with people in my community. And I need to have some more specific answers on this, what's happening and what's being done. I want to find out specifically what's happening in terms of technology. I was not aware that we were ordering so many tablets before the start of the school year to fill a gap. I want to know how many tablets were ordered? How many are now being used? And how many Chromebooks do we still need to get? And, and are we sure that all of the students that don't have Chromebooks are able to access the program online? This is critical. I need to know that we have, all of our IEP students have access to the, to the appropriate technology. That is, that is critical information. I want to ensure that we have essentially, you know, determined that all of our, like that we've addressed all of the things in terms of, in terms of access. The last thing I will say is we sat through two hours of public comment. And as you might have seen, my son, this was the first time, I mean, he was all up in there. He, you know, was eager to hear what other people were saying. He's a middle school student and, and as you heard, many middle school students and parents of middle school students have had concern about the, about the program. So it, it is a long day. And, and as he said, he's like, you know, I mean, my mom got me this gamer chair and I love screen time, but I'm still exhausted. You know, and so this isn't just about screens and blue lights. It's, it's, it's boom, 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 from one thing to the next. And for a sixth grader who, you know, had lunch and had recess before, now to be in, in a situation where, where there's none, it's a, it's a long day. And, and, you know, it, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't work in terms of, you know, keeping him to where he's able to be engaged and at his best. And I, and I, you know, I hate the fact that I'm, I'm talking about my kid, but this is the reality, you know? The other thing, and I, and I reached out to the administration about this as well, it has to do with parental controls. I am, you know, I don't have a laptop and so, or a Chromebook for my son. And so he's actually using my school board laptop. And I have to give a shout out to IT who have been incredible in helping me to make sure that this school board laptop is, is able to be used. They've been really very great to work with and I know that they've had a lot on their plates. You know, but I have no way of being able to lock down stuff. And so, you know, keeping him from playing games, it's been really hard. And, and that's something that's really important to do, not just while people are home, but also while our kids are, are in school. So that's, I think, of critical importance that we figure out because it's not just about them logging in, right? It's about them actually doing the work. And if he's able, he can tab and, you know, play his games. And if he's able, he can tab and, you know, play his game. So it's like, I, you know, I need help to be able to ensure that, that he's on task. And I know that I'm not the only parent that's, that's going through that. The other thing that I heard a lot is that, you know, there's a lot of variety in how things are going from school to school. And that does concern me to some degree because I think all of our students should have the flexibility and, you know, the experience that, that they need. So, you know, our board, I believe, should have voted on how our day was structured. You know, in our policy, the language says that the school board should review the schools, the school hours before they're adopted. What ended up happening was we reviewed them, but really only very briefly before essentially they were rolled out. And this is what the impact of that is, that we now are in a position where we're getting inundated with public comment and people sharing concern. That, that public comment, that we should have vetted this out before moving forward. And so I ask for those numbers, and I'm going to go through them again, the attendance data, the information about the tablets and the Chromebooks and how many we have and how many we need. I want to have a clear understanding of how transportation's working. You know, how long is it taking to deliver these meals? Do we have the same number of bus drivers? How is that working? Because I still don't quite follow, you know, how we were able to get all the kids to school before. But now the meal delivery seems to take longer when it seems like there'd be fewer stops. And, and, and then, yeah, how are we, what's, what's, what is the story behind the staff members that have been impacted by, by COVID? And what's the plan moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Page, then Ms. Door.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to commend the administration for awesome. Reopen with love. These are definitely some trying times. Something that we never anticipated, expected. So reopen with love definitely is a true testament to this virtual, this virtual environment that we are in. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from teachers, families, and heard some hiccups, you know, like regarding the toolkit. But mainly, you know, people's, we know that this is, this is something that we had not anticipated. So I think we plan as best that we could. So I just want to thank everyone and for all the hard work. But what I'm definitely curious, because yes, we heard a lot of comments. And Superintendent Cameras, I'm glad that you said that you want to get feedback from the entire district. Because I want to know the concerns that we heard tonight. Are they isolated concerns? Or do we have a district-wide problem? If it's isolated, you know, I don't, I don't want to hear, receive data, you know, lopsided information. I want to hear from everyone. Because we serve all children in the city of Richmond. Not just the South Side. Yes, I could be district focused. But we serve the entire district. We, we serve the entire city. So we need to know our, you know, our parents, our students, are we having challenges all over? And if, you know, if we need to make those adjustments. We don't serve just one or a few. We serve all children in the city. So I'm looking forward to that information. You know, very a comprehensive feedback that we, that we get. Because again, were these problems isolated or district-wide? Because I'm concerned with every child in the city of Richmond. And we cannot be focused on a few. We have to, our focus has to be on every child in the city that serve our, that attend RPS. So that's my, my request. I don't want to hear a lopsided story, a one-sided story. I want to hear the whole story, the whole, the total picture. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Door, Mr. Barlow, Ms. Cosby, then Dr. Sapini.
I've already spoken, so I'll wait until the rest of my colleagues have spoken.
All right, Mr. Barlow, Ms. Cosby, then Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Door.
So I, I just want to do, you know, I think we've had a fair amount of feedback this early on, on this issue of the, the amount of screen time here. And of course, I want to make sure that we're getting more, more input. But I do want to caution against saying that these are suggesting that they may just be isolated concerns. Because, you know, I'm speaking to educators as well. I'm speaking to teachers and principals. And, you know, it's, it's pretty clear to me that we're embarking on a new way of providing education, certainly for our school district. And that, that we should be listening to our educators and we should be listening to, to our families and incorporating that feedback into providing the highest quality instruction that we can. So certainly let's, let's get some more input. But, but I to
I totally agree. But again, we need to hear from all of our families. So I'm not disagreeing with that. We support all educators, all families, but we need to hear the entire story.
Ms. Page, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ms. Page. I just want to, to make sure that we are, we are noting these concerns and that we are, we don't let things languish too long. But of course, I want to, to hear from other families. And I think that it's clear, and I've spoken with the superintendent about this week, about it this week. We've got many different families in our district and some families may have more time to spend with their children on a day-to-day basis, providing support in the evenings and providing support in the afternoons. And, and that's something that we certainly have to, to keep in mind. But I do think that there's something to be said for, you know, based on my, my experience doing some virtual education stuff in the past. I do think that there's something to be said for burnout.
It's our responsibility to create equity for the entire district.
Ms. Page.
Couldn't
Yes, Ms. On.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree more, Ms. Page. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cosby, then Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Door, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to echo kudos to the RPS family administration, our teachers, our building leaders, our parents and our students. I will say a special shout out to our parents who have been so gracious. And although they've been hiccups, you know, they've even said, well, I wasn't able to do X, Y, and Z, but later on it got better. And so just having that patience. And a special shout out to our teachers who have gone above and beyond. I have been with several neighbors in different areas from the sixth district to the seventh district to the third district. And, you know, I've been in the company of some of my neighbors. When the teachers called back to say, hey, I know you had a problem. I just wanted to make sure it was resolved. So thank you, thank you to our teachers who are just going above and beyond. Well, and with that being said, I just want to make sure, and it's been said before, but, you know, the attendance is really critical. And we want to make sure that all of our students are connected and that we mitigate as much as possible any student that is not connected due to not having a device or, you know, the hotspot's not working or what have you. So I too am extremely interested in getting attendance data per school. And so we can get a good idea of, you know, where we see some of our, our pressing needs, you know, where we have students who may not be connected. If we see, and we're seeing a pattern, you know, large numbers or what have you. So the goal is to make sure our students are connected, yes, and that they're learning. I too have heard of the fatigue with some of our students. And I, you know, I do hope that we can address that sooner rather than later. And also I think this with, with the connectivity issues, I think it really speaks to the importance of, of course, having those community partners that have stepped up. And I'm sorry, I thanked everybody else, but community partners too, that have stepped up and, and said, look, we're going to provide an opportunity. We're going to provide a safe space for our students to learn. You know, and many of them are taking on financial burdens to make this happen. And so as much as possible as we can connect those entities, I think it is critical because it may be some time before, you know, we have students who will be able to do log on and do things on their own and stay connected on their own. And they're going to need those supports in the community. And as we move forward, I would like to give more information about, continued information rather. Thank you, Dr. Harris, it was some last meeting. But continued information on how we are partnering in our communities to make sure that we're supporting these community partners as well as our students who are, who are not connected. And they have to be connected because this is a time when the gap between the haves and the have-nots will widen and increase unfortunately. And we want to make sure that we help mitigate that as much as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cosby, Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Door, then Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you. Certainly, thank you, Mr. Young, for bringing up the attendance because I was actually going to wait till a few more items down. And I certainly do agree with the question that had been asked pertaining to the attendance. And I think we, we definitely need to have that information per district, also per school, as Ms. Cosby mentioned, so that we know exactly where the issues may, may be. From way back when, I was very concerned about the device distribution, devices that were supposed to have come back from seniors that graduated and so on and so forth. So I'm wondering where we fall as far as the shortcomings of the amount of devices that were returned. Also pertaining to attendance with such a large number as we've seen or heard from the article. I would have liked that the board would have had that information, but obviously we didn't have a meeting. But I'm looking for the potential impact that that would have on future funding for the programming or, you know, whatever case may be. Also, as a parent of four students in RPS, I'm looking for the potential, the plan or options that the administration may have, or have they given it thought? We've heard a lot of feedback about the scheduling and the times and things of that nature. But I'm just wondering, are we, is the administration waiting for as much feedback as possible before they think of a plan? Or do they have an idea or option that they may implement depending on the situation? Is there a plan in place or are we just waiting? Thank you.
Mr. Cameras, did you want to address that?
If possible, I'd love to just wait for all the comments and then just do some
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so then Ms. Gibson, Ms. Burke, Ms. Page. Oh, Ms. Door, I'm sorry, Ms. Door. Ms. Gibson, Ms. Burke, Ms. Page.
So I forgot three other things. One is just a couple of teachers have asked me for clarity on policy seven dash three point six, which is the length of the school day for which teachers are required to teach. I believe our policy says seven hours. And is that seven hours in front of, is that to be interpreted as seven hours in front of a screen, as I think some may be interpreting? Some are interpreting it as eight hours. So I think some clarity for our teachers could be helpful there. Two, I think one of my colleagues references, but I just wanted to also bring up the concern of, while I am a proponent of us looking at shorter days, I want to make sure that they don't have unintended consequences for caregivers, et cetera. So certainly I'm hearing from folks in my district about wanting shorter days, but I understand to Ms. Page's point that we need to be listening to the whole city. And then finally, I know, because I read in all of your RPS Direct that there was to be no homework and assignments, but for some reason that is still being lost in translation. So I don't know what we do to fix that, but I am interested because I felt like I got the message. So I'm interested in how we make sure that we're getting the message down to our teacher.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Door, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Burke, then Ms. Page, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to know, I, I have heard from people all over the district. I mean, even when I was down at IT getting my laptop fixed, there was another one there and was like, it was Friday. And she goes, I don't know about you all, but I wish today was Wednesday, you know? I mean, so it's, it's, it's everybody, everybody's feeling it. And, and I, and I want to emphasize one thing too. You know, in this discussion, we've spent a lot of time praising the teachers right now. You know, I mean, that to me seems like a universal thing we all agree on is that the teachers have really gone above and beyond. We've also heard from teachers across the district that this is not developmentally appropriate, not just at some schools. We've heard from them at every school almost. I know I have. And so if we're saying, hey, teachers, great job, but then are pushing their input aside, consider what signal that sends. I for one think that the teachers have an incredible insight as to what they're saying. You know, they, they can tell what happens throughout the course of the day and whether their students are staying engaged. They're hearing from their teacher, you know, from their students firsthand. And, and they've made it abundantly clear that, that we need to make some changes. And if we want to retain these teachers, then we need to figure out how to proceed with expediency. Because as the days go on and, and schoolwork becomes more robust, we're, we're going to potentially have, have bigger problems. So, so again, I'm, I look forward to the answers Mr. Cameras is about to provide on these things. They are, they are important issues. And I don't want to wait another meeting to then get some information and then push a vote to, you know, these, this is something that needs to be addressed soon. And this was a promise that was made that the administration would, you know, would, would wait and hear. Okay, let's see how things go. Okay, I feel like we've heard. And how are we going to, to, to move forward?
All right, thank you, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Burke, then Ms. Page, and then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to extend my appreciation to the administration and teachers, the faculty, staff, admin, school administrators.
Teachers, the um faculty, staff, adminis- school administrators. Most important, our children, our children, because this is an adjustment for them. And our community supporters as well, it's truly been a village. And I thank everyone um for getting us off to a great start, we didn't have any casualties the first week. And that was, that was good, in spite of the electricity having gone off in the East End, of which where I live, I was in it. But those teachers, as you heard um from Woodville and in, can't think of the other school, they persevered, they moved forward. So thank you so very much for making it happen. And our children and our parents, look to our teachers and our our um. Food chiefs and and other persons, principals for that that pat on the back that. How do you get the computer open? So thank you so very much for that support. What I want us to be mindful of as we move forward. I understand about um not having to sit still at length in front of a screen. I have a hard time with that. I understand that well. So I know that our administration can work that out legally. In terms of not shortening. The amount of opportunities or lessons that our children should have. We said we were going to have a rigorous um curriculum in place. Up-to-date curriculum, but I don't want us to shortchange any child or any teacher. From doing what he or she decides they want to do regarding teaching. So something that was brought up earlier, and I I was thrown by this, but if. Just throwing this out here, we talked at one time because of COVID, that we may have to extend our school year. Just want us to be correct, number one. Regarding the amount of hours. Our children are supposed to have on task. So we may need to now look at shortening the day, but extending the school year. Because legally, they have to have so many hours of instruction. Being also mindful that many of our children have not opened a book. If they opened their Chromebooks, they were playing games or whatever else since March. I know a couple of first graders that told me that they, the first day was so hard, they slept. When I woke up, I missed half the lesson. So we have to have time to get acclimated as well. And it's hard when you have the summers off and you get back to school the first week of school, this is different for us. So I want us to be patient with ourselves and patient with our teachers and. I I like the idea of of getting across the board. Um, as you heard, the comments that were given from um. From Frank and Motter, they were awesome, parents called me and said, well, this worked out well, this is my child's first year, she went from Bellevue to to Franklin and she's. She's enjoying this, she's loving this, she's liking this. So I just want to make sure that we are, as Ms. Page stated, addressing the needs of every child. And we're savvy enough and smart enough to revisit this. Nothing is etched in stone. I hope that after tonight, we talk to some of our colleagues in the neighboring counties. Across the country as well. Everybody else is struggling getting Chromebooks. Because we're not the only system in the country trying to get Chromebooks, and the other thing is happening. So I'm glad that every child has the opportunity to have a tablet or have a Chromebook, to have some means of technology. It's unfortunate we had to go through COVID. To have that done, but they they had, they're up to date per se with the 21st century following. So um I am comfortable. That our, that we will adjust what needs to be adjusted. And that we we are leading with love, we are serving with love, we are teaching with love. So it's just an opportunity to go back to the table and make some adjustments. Some children adjust to change as well, some teachers, that music teacher at Bellevue, that's on the RPS Direct. I mean, if I had a teacher like that teaching music, I'd steal Mr. Johnson, I think his name. If you all had a scene that you need to see it on YouTube, a rich and public schools teacher at Bellevue Elementary. If I had a teacher like that, I probably would have majored in singing, seriously. But so there are different levels, if someone stated earlier in terms of years of experience and. And people would address things differently. So um I do look forward to hearing from more folk in the East End. More folk, Ms. Cosby, as you stated earlier, Hall and Park area, South Side area. I do look forward because I read through all the letters as well. So um it's it's, and we'll make the necessary adjustment. But be mindful too that as we look at individual learning styles and teaching styles. We can do better, but we've started out well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, Ms. Page, and then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, um, just Superintendent Cameras, as you um compile on the information. Also, if you can provide information regarding the seat time. With the virtual learning, because I know DOE has some guidelines regarding the seat time and. You know, have we exceeded or are we, you know, well within the guidelines? So that's something else to add to the list.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cosby.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to, actually, Ms. Burke said it, I, you know, because I just wanted to make sure we went back to this. Um, about a um an alternate calendar, whether it's an extended calendar, whatever, so. We've heard, you know, there may be their concerns with. The school day, I mean, I don't know how we're going to address it, but as I stated before. A holistic approach is needed so we can look at possibly extending the calendar or not, again. Um, um, changing the school calendar, so you know, we might not have as many breaks. Uh, and make sure that our students are back in school. And I think September was the month that we were going to get some information about it as well. So I think it's all fitting. And I look forward to receiving that information. Also, when we talk about, I go back to our community partners too, I guess I can't say it enough, but. Um, you know, as we're looking at the the school time or, you know, if we're considering shortening the day or what have you. Like, um. You know, I saw some camps, I forget what um organization did. Camps or did these exercises for students, but to incorporate these enrichment opportunities. You know, as a way to perhaps get. Off of the screen, you know, whether, anyway, all I'm saying is this, what I'm saying is to also look. To our community partners and embrace our community partners as we think of creative ways. To um address some of the issues that that we've heard. And so, um, and I think that is, that's critical, I was um. It was a news article, um, and they were talking about higher ed and the the. The most important word that they said in the higher ed community and and applies to us, being able to pivot. So, uh. And we have to pivot sometimes, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. All right, Mr. Cameras, that is all that I see. Over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen, and thank you to the board, very helpful feedback and and thoughts and questions. Um, let me just tackle the the schedule first, as I said. At the top of our discussion, um, absolutely, we um. Want to hear this feedback and we will pivot as as Ms. Cosby uh just noted as as necessary. Um, we are in day five, so um. I do want to make sure that we uh again move urgently, but also um. With the deliberative quality that we need to have in order to not create new unforeseen challenges. Um, school schedules are are um not the simplest of things, so. Uh, my commitment to you is that when we meet next week, I'll I'll come back with um some. More refined thoughts about where we go from here, um, so that we'll be in a position to. Uh, take whatever action we need to take quickly. Um, but informed by uh feedback and I'll be able to give you. Um, timelines around what sorts of changes we could make and and um. What they would look like and what would be entailed and that sort of thing. On attendance, um, I would be uh thrilled to do a comprehensive. Uh, discussion of the data at our meeting uh next week as well. Um, we're, of course, um gathering up all that data from the first few days and. We'll have, um, hopefully, uh nearly two weeks of data for you to look at uh next week. Um, I can tell you just at a high level, I don't, I don't have all the details at hand, so. Um, thank you for your grace uh in in not um. Uh, pushing further on the exact numbers, but I can tell you that. Um, we've been actually quite encouraged um by the number of kids that have been uh logging on thus far. Um, uh, but we will gather up that data and have it for you all um next week. Um, and then on the the tech, um, you know, I I want to just give a huge shout out to. Um, our 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 technology services department, but also to our our principals. Um, and teachers and volunteers who've who've helped us. Come up frankly with a very, I I I think, uh, creative and effective. Answer to the Chromebook shortage, there are some school divisions which just. Uh, you know, frankly, kind of threw up their hands when the Chromebook shortage uh started to occur. But through some very quick work, uh, we were able to to pivot, again, using that word. Um, to fill the gap with with tablets and um that has been uh extremely helpful. Um, and um, of course, glad to give more uh information and data on that. Um, but we are in a very good position on the tech due to some really quick work. Uh, on the part of, you know, the procurement team, the tech services team, volunteers configuring and and so many other things on on that front. Um, but we can do some more uh concrete updates on that uh at our meeting next week as well. And then again, to everybody at home listening, um, uh, feedback is a gift, so keep sending it, it's super helpful. Um, we will continue to iterate and and uh perfect and. Um, and make this this semester or however long it lasts. Um, as a successful and productive and supportive uh as we possibly can, so thank you.
Thank you, okay. I think now um we can move on to the. Oh, was there a staff report, are we?
That, oh. Sorry, hold on one second. Um, uh, we had uh. Twelve uh teacher vacancies on day one, now those classrooms were filled by long-term subs. Um, that's actually the lowest number that we have had, so every year for the last three years, we have gotten lower. Obviously, our goal is zero, but um that was a really great accomplishment and huge kudos uh to Ms. Lee and her team. Um, and um, obviously, uh, we will continue to move on that target, but. Just a couple of years ago, we were, I think, north of sixty vacancies on day one, and every year we've been able to pull that down, so. Um, uh, again, we can have more detailed information for you on that next week.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, now an update on the Virginia Department of Education Memorandum of Understanding.
Yep, we are getting ready for our next um. Our next corrective action plan meeting on September thirtieth. Um, and um, I'll have more to share after that. Um, I think the VDO is also working to schedule our bi-annual. Um, meeting with the state superintendent and the president of the state board. Um, so more information on that as well. And uh Dr. Ortiz, who's the new head of the Office of School Quality, was actually able to join a community circle. Uh, I think today, um, to kind of see some of the work in action, and she was thrilled, so. We're very happy she was able to participate.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any comments? No, all right. So now receive for first read. The score.
All right, well, good evening, Madam. Yes, good evening, Madam Chair Owen. Madam Vice Chair Burke, school board members, Superintendent Cameras. I'd like to take this opportunity to submit for first read the school code of responsible ethics. Known as the score. Per the board's previous guidance regarding the score, the administration reconvened the score committee. To conduct a more thorough review of our existing score. Our goal became to ensure that our score is aligned to the less punitive parts. Of the Virginia Department of Education's Model Guidance for Positive. And Preventive Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternatives to Suspension. In doing so, a number of changes were made to our existing score, which is uploaded for your review. You will be able to note all of the changes as the edits are outlined in red. Most notably, we made changes to the levels of interventions and responses. Interventions and responses are laid out from a level one to a level five. As you progress up the levels, the interventions become more intense. And the responses become more punitive. The score committee removed short-term suspension from a level two response and moved the short-term suspension to level three. Long-term suspension was removed from a level three response and moved to a level four response. For example, there are now twenty-six student behavior and responses at the elementary level. Where short-term suspension can no longer be considered as a response. And twelve student behavior and responses at the elementary school level. Where a six to ten day suspension is no longer considered as a possible response. We look forward to your review of the score and answering any questions that arise during your review.
Okay. So. If anyone has any questions or comments. Okay, Ms. Gibson would like to speak now. Ms. Gibson?
Sorry about that. I'm coming up from the basement. Um, so I have a request, I would like to see, well, I know that we got comments from the uh. Uh, Legal Aid Justice Center, and so I would like to request that we uh implement the revisions that they have suggested. Um, and I also want to request that we um, we pull together uh students, you know, a a group of folks to to talk about the the document. Um, I I I believe that's something that's happened in the past, but, you know, we had students that provided input as as far as the SROs. Um, I think that this document would would in particular merit input. Um, both from uh, from, you know, students as well as teachers. Um, and I'd like also to look at some data specifically, you know, what, looking at the discipline uh. Uh, data across the district, because I want to get a sense of, you know, how this document has been, you know, implemented from school to school.
Well, Ms. Gibson, we we do need to vote on this by the end of September. So I believe it's in, the vote is scheduled for next week, is, am I correct on that? Mr. Cameras?
I believe so.
Yes, so, and there were, there, we didn't have students that were on the committee, but I know there were um building educators who were on the committee. Okay, Ms. Dorr has a question?
I have two questions, one is um. Usually we vote on the score at the end of the school year, so. Can you refresh our slash the public's memory as to why we're voting on it now? And what are the implications of delay? I do think that, um, given some of the recent feedback about student pushout. Um, you know, I certainly want to make sure that I take a critical eye to this. Um, so that's one question, and my second question is. What is, this might be a hard question to answer, but what is the role of score in a virtual environment and? I would just love the administration's thoughts on that, I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around. The role of stu- school discipline in a virtual setting and and do we need to? You know, I don't know, I don't really know what the answer is, but I just would love some additional context there.
All right, Mr. Hughes, do you want to wait for all the comments and then respond to everybody, or do you want to go one at a time?
I'll go ahead and go one at a time if you don't mind.
That's fine.
All right, Ms. Dorr, to your first question, um. By stage. By state code, we we need to have a revised score available to our parents 30 days after the beginning of the new school year. I do think that some of the delay in reviewing a score or bringing a score forth to the school board was simply all the time that we spent with our reopening with love plan. With regards to what does the score look like in a virtual environment, there are actually a number of behaviors and responses that would connect to students in a virtual learning environment. Things such as unauthorized use of school electronics or equipment, violation of acceptable use of technology or internet policy, posting, distributing, displaying, or sharing material literature that is libelous, including using electronic means to post such material. So there's actually a great number, a great number of student-level responses that connect to life in a virtual world.
Okay. Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Gibson. Okay, I think that's everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So actually, Ms. Gibson and Ms. Dorr brought up most of what I wanted to say, but just to follow up on a couple of items. One is that I also support the legal aid updates. And then the the second is with respect to this 30-day deadline. So I understand that we're, it looks like we're up against the the wall in some respects there. But to what degree do we have the ability to amend this during the school year or to make modifications? My impression, of course, is that we have to have a document in place, but we can update our policies throughout the school year should we need to. So this isn't work that has to wait until next year for the board to continue to contemplate revisions, in my opinion. But I'm curious to hear if there are thoughts that would suggest otherwise.
Mr. Hughes?
I would need to check, I will need to go back and check it, I will need to go back and review the model guidance to determine the exact language around the the adoption of a new score.
Okay, so the thing, the thing that I get a little worried about is that, and there's some policies where this happens, where we have some opportunity to focus on it, and then we get carried on or caught up with other projects. And then we don't really take another look at it until a year later. And I just think that particularly in this moment, particularly when we have interest on the board level in getting more data related to student disciplinary matters, I'd prefer not to push this discussion off for another year without addressing these matters. So I'd love to see more information along the lines of what student disciplinary actions look like across the district and on the school level. Any other information that we can see to to help inform these approaches? And then, I don't know, you know, it may, it may make sense for us to have a separate board meeting or a committee or something along those lines who can meet with folks who are involved in these updates and have been involved in score so that, you know, board members who are interested have a better understanding of of the thought process and all the effort that goes into it. But I definitely don't want to to lose out on the opportunity while there's interest to to make constructive changes to this document. So so, in short, Mr. Hughes, I fear our work is likely not done in that we will, my hope is that we'll continue to work on it, and whether we can publish those updates, you know, after this 30-day period, whether it be a month or two months from now or three months from now, I would like us to get some of that groundwork done for potential changes next year either way.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so, I mean, the administration has taught, has made a recommendation to eliminate school resource officers from the school, and we need to get a plan on how that's going to work. And that includes student discipline. And so, you know, I you know, this, this is, this is, this is the discussion of our, you know, I mean, we've been talking about Black Lives Matter. Well, this is it, you know? And and I don't think we can suggest that we are living true to our values as a district that has held up the importance of equity, you know, giving a week to a discussion about this critical policy that that is, you know, that that I think reflects issues that we as a district have had and pertain to equity in a very considerable way. So, so I think that, whether we request, if there's, if it's possible to request a waiver for this, especially given the reality in terms of virtual, the virtual environment that we're in now, I would encourage us to look and see if there is an opportunity to do that. But I don't think it's okay that we are suggesting making such a radical change without looking holistically at the entire picture. So, so, you know, I mean, this, this document is really where we're seeing the impact of our kids. And and a week, a week review is just not, and that's, I don't, I don't understand. I don't understand that. So, so I think that this should be part of a discussion about, you know, so if we are to remove these officers, what is the timing on that? What is the, what do our alternative staff look like? You know, how does that then get translated into this document? You know, what does the rollout look like? You know, this, this isn't, we can't do this piecemeal. We can't. Or it's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, we're not gonna end up on the other side any better than where we are now. These things all have to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess my question is to you in terms of board leadership. So what is the process that we should follow? Because we've asked for the discipline data on a number of occasions. And we did talk about, I think, our last meeting or maybe the meeting before even having a committee. Talk about equity, I feel like sometimes as an invisible voice. Anyway, so how do we, how do we make it happen in terms of getting this information? Because this is not the first time we've asked.
Well, I know we got some data about how many suspensions there had been by school. So can you be?
I thought we had gotten data about the arrests by school.
Well, I know we got that as well, but Mr. Camaras, do you have something to help us with this?
Yeah, I'm not certain about the suspensions by school, but I can certainly talk with Mr. Hughes about about getting that. I did want to just try to clarify as a procedural matter where we are. So we are completely fine if the board wants to delay on the updates to score. What we would in essence be doing is maintaining the existing score for now. I felt strongly that we needed to make some adjustments to our existing score, which by no means would be the final adjustments. But we wanted to bring it in line with state guidance, particularly on the consequences for some of the behaviors that we felt were overly punitive in our current score, which is why Mr. Hughes brought forward tonight what he did. That doesn't have to be the last word, but it is a step in the right direction. And so I guess my question to the board is that we could either just maintain the existing score we have and take some additional weeks to do more discussion and engagement about an end-state score. We could move forward with this updated version that Mr. Hughes has put forward and continue to look at additional adjustments. I just didn't want folks to see this as if this document were adopted, that's, that's the end of any discussion of score. But the the default is if no action was taken, then the current document would just continue to be in effect. So again, open to how the board wants to move forward on this. I was hearing a sense of urgency when we talked about this last, to bring the score in line with model state guidance, which is what this does. That does not have to be the end of the conversation on score. We can continue to revisit it over the course of the year and make amendments, as is the board's right at any time on any policy. This was a kind of step one towards creating a score that reflects everything that that we've talked about.
And and I will say that I think it was at the direction of the board last spring, and I may not be remembering correctly, that we did go back to the committee. And the committee has been working on this all summer. And that's, that's the result. That's what they have brought forward. And part of that also was there were some changes made in the General Assembly that enabled us to do some things a little differently. And there's more things that are happening even with the policy decision that will help us to give a little more flexibility to the building principals. So, Mr. Hughes, did you have, if people want to make changes for next week, like the legal aid suggestions, is there a time when they can respond to you before the vote? Maybe by Wednesday or Thursday? Do you have anything else to say there?
Chair Owen, I would just, you're setting a deadline, and I'm happy to respond to any inquiries or questions that come in up until that deadline you set.
Okay, I see that we have Mr. Barlow and Ms. Burke also want to speak first.
Yeah, I did want to bring up one other point, and I do think that moving forward, we should try to institutionalize, including students on the score review committee on an annual basis. I think they've got a a very important role to play in what discipline looks like in the school system. And I was really blown away by a lot of the quality of conversation that we've seen with our students in particular, related to the SRO issue. So I know that we've got highly capable students who who can contribute to this process. So I would like to see that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the work that has been placed, done regarding this, because you all, the committee has been working on this for a while. I do like the idea of student input along the way as well. However, it is, I believe it is important that we do update what's currently in place by reviewing by the next meeting and moving forward. And I like what what Mr. Camaras stated in terms of, we can, we can discuss this all during the year. We can discuss this throughout the year, but there are some items legally that should be changed. And as Ms. Dorr asked about, and Mr. Hughes responded, what goes on there with the virtual piece? Yesterday, Sunday, right, yesterday, it was a conversation about cyberbullying, things to that extent. So we do need to have, I haven't studied this at length, but I like this better than the one that was in place earlier, with the one currently is in place. And this is not perfect. I think it's a work in progress. But my suggestion is that we come back at the next meeting and make a decision after having reviewed and also getting feedback from the community and move forward in bringing closure to this and then creating another committee to work throughout the year to amend or make adjustments as needed.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that as soon as you can, to give Mr. Hughes the opportunity to bring it forward. So I would say by Thursday, but if you discover something over the weekend. But let's try and get it in to him by Thursday, any changes. We certainly had several people who supported the legal aid updates. So that's a possibility that he can bring forward with with the document next week. And if there's anything else that you see as you go through this document, and it is clear where the changes have been made, they're all color-coded. And so as you go through it, you know, you can, you can move more rapidly than you have to read every single word to see where the changes are. Now, if there was something that wasn't changed that you wanted to be changed, then that also would need to come forward. Am I on target, Mr. Hughes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will review, 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 do our homework and get responses back to you as quickly as we can. And seeing no more comments, we will move on to the update on state guidance regarding attendance.
All right, well, that's me as well. I'd like to provide an update on state guidance regarding attendance and how RPS has used this to inform our own practice. On July 24th, the VDOE issued guidance on tracking attendance for the 2020-2021 school year. This memo acknowledged that attendance can look differently in delivery models other than in-person instruction. In alignment with this memo and existing state guidance, RPS students will be provided multiple opportunities to be marked present. Besides being marked present for logging into virtual instruction, students can also receive credit for daily attendance if they engage in one of the following activities. Activity in Google Classroom for that day, including engagement on a discussion board, phone call, video chat, or email exchange about instructional content with their teacher, demonstrated evidence of engagement with peers from collaborative work from that day, and submission of a task or assignment that day for something that is not yet overdue. This guidance reiterates the priority we place on students coming to school every day, logging in virtually. Students must continue to demonstrate mastery of standards, course content based on the following: classwork, quizzes, unit tests, projects, and homework in order to pass the class, be promoted. However, this guidance also provides our students a level of flexibility given circumstances during the pandemic that can negatively impact a student's daily attendance in class. I'll pause there for comments, questions?
Anyone have questions about all these different ways that a student can be seen as being in attendance in virtual school? Here we go. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just from a practical standpoint, at the risk of getting into the weeds, but to fully appreciate the kind of directive that we are going to to provide. When a student, or excuse me, when a teacher is recording in Aspen, what what kind of recommendation are we actually providing? So in other words, are we just providing what Harry just shared, or are we going to put any meat on those bones? Or are we instead err on the side of what I'd prefer that we do, which is, again, to defer to the teachers and their discretion. But but do we have any ideas about what that will actually look like? We are, I mean, we're obviously already weekend, but what that would look like in regards to, okay, was the student, did the student actually participate in this this class or not? And when they're going into the login attendance in Aspen? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young, for that question. I would say, number one, we have changed the Aspen settings to allow teachers to have the ability to backdate attendance. In other words, if I'm a teacher, let's say I'm a high school teacher, I teach biology, and a student doesn't come to class that day for whatever reason, yet the student is able to get the homework or the class, excuse me, the class assignment over Google Classroom and then complete that assignment before the day ends, which technically would be 11:59. The teacher then has the ability to look at the assignment, make sure it's appropriately done, and then the next day, go back and give the student credit for the attendance. And so with these four options that are outlined, the same thing is true. And so with these four options that are outlined, the same thing is true. It's a teacher's discretion. It's not at a teacher's discretion, it's the state guidance that if any of these four things happen, teachers should go back and give students credit for their attendance for that day. Did I answer your question?
Madam Chair, if I-
Yes, Mr. Young, I see that you want to follow up.
Just briefly, you did, thank you. That was, that was very helpful. And I just, for the benefit of my colleagues and anybody listening in, it may be helpful then, given those parameters, that when we do next week, look at the attendance data that we're just mindful of. I support everything that Harry just said, but I do think it's going to be important when we review the data that we are not mistaking apples for oranges and that we are, this would be my recommendation, if my colleagues concur, that we also look at the login and not just, not just attendance in Aspen, because there's, given what Harry just said, could be two different things, in other words. In other words, we may have student, student X not log in on Tuesday, but submit work relevant to Tuesday. They submit it on Wednesday, and they are counted as having attended for Tuesday, if that makes sense. I don't have a problem with the latter. I think that's erring on the side of what VDOE has recommended. But I do think, just for our edification, relevant to our preceding conversation, I do think it's going to be important that we not just look at that Aspen attendance, but also look at that login kind of data. Hope that, hope that made sense.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. And now, an update on emergency procurement for the virtual semester. Ms. Udesco?
Yes, good evening. School Board Policy 3-3.4 allows emergency contracts in an emergency, and are per superintendent approval. Policy states that the board will be notified of such purchases. So tonight, I wanted to share with you, we've entered into four emergency contracts relevant to our virtual learning needs. The first is a contract with the Center for Transformative Teacher Training. This is a professional development contract for school leaders, both principals and assistant principals, about leading instructional change in a virtual environment. The contract also included new teacher training on creating, nurturing high expectations in a virtual environment. There were additional pre-service sessions, and then there is unlimited access for all of our teachers to ongoing professional development, on-demand webinars, tools, and training. We also contracted with Better Lesson for $54,000, which was additional professional development series for teachers during pre-service, again, with a focus on the virtual environment and social-emotional learning. We entered a contract with the plug-in platform, which is not only the platform for the virtual backgrounds, that I think even Ms. Page is using this evening, but also is a platform used by the Office of Exceptional Education to deliver related services and one-on-one instructional sessions for our students with disabilities. This particular platform has additional accessibility features and interactive tools that are not all available via the Google products. And then finally, we entered contract with Lucid Chart for $45,000. This is an instructional tool that teachers can use to create charts and diagrams, think Venn diagrams or things like that, but specifically in a virtual environment when there aren't student manipulatives that can help make concepts more concrete. And Lucid Chart is used in other divisions and integrates with our Google applications. Happy to take any questions on those four. I'll note that Board Policy does state that subsequent renewals of such contracts would follow normal procurement processes.
All right. I am not seeing any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now we have the quarterly financials for Patrick Henry and the budget. And we are just receiving these. Is that correct, Mr. Cameron? There's no action required.
That's my understanding. And I know Ms. Wilson had reached out to the Patrick Henry staff. I don't know if they are available.
Yes, they are on board docs.
Got it. They were doing a-
They're there. And I don't, there's nobody here this evening in our meeting from Patrick Henry. So I would suggest that if you have questions about those, please submit them. To whom, Mr. Cameron? To Ms. Wilson, to-
Yes.
Madam Chair, those documents have also been shared with Ms. Braga, so that our budget and financial team could look at them. And I did send a link to Patrick Henry, so that they could join the meeting tonight, but I did not hear anything back from them.
Okay. All right. So if you have any questions, you can submit them to Ms. Wilson, and she can get them to the Patrick Henry folks. All right? Then we'll move on to marking period changes to the calendar.
Okay, so I'm up again.
Oh, Mr. Cam, I mean, Mr. Hughes, okay.
Just as a reminder, it's just other information. It doesn't require a presentation, Mr. Hughes.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So this is just, it's just a little twitch in the calendar, is all this is.
Correct.
Okay. All right. In that case, do we have new business announcements? All right. Now, it is, you know, it is late, but I will say that we have a very short item to take care of in closed session. We can probably do it in five minutes. So I'd really like to get it done, because we have a longer one next time. Isn't that right, Ms. Lilly? Yes. So we have to do something special here.
Yes. You have to log out of this Zoom meeting and go to the link that Mr. Stanley has sent you all, and then come out of that one to come back into this one for open. I need to send you all the language for closed. I do apologize.
Are you sending that in email?
Yes, I will. Or I can put it in the chat.
Okay.
Whichever's easiest.
It might take a while to type it into chat. You got another quicker way to do that?
I do not. I will email it.
Email it. I just need to keep this on my computer.
Linda, are we switching over now? Should we be-
She's gonna send us the link in email. No, first she's sending us the-
Close session.
Close session. And Matthew has sent us something?
The link should already have come to you.
Yeah, it arrived 39 minutes ago.
Okay. Well, let-
So I think everybody should leave this meeting and then log in.
First, we, but first we have to-
Read into closed.
Have to read into closed. That's what we're waiting for. And I still don't have it.
It just went. In the meantime, let's see if I can do this and see if it's faster.
You mean to go ahead and read it?
You got it?
Yeah. Pursuant to student exemption at Section 2.2-3711, Subsection A, Subsection 2 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 is amended. I move that the Square of the City of Richmond convenes closed session to consider the admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning Richmond public school student.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, then we go into closed.
Ms. Dour? Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
He already gone?
It seems to already be gone.
Ms. Cosby? He also gone?
Seems to be.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
You are now enclosed. See you all in a second.
Here we go. Yay. All right. Hello, everybody. Long time no see. Scott says, I see, one, two, three, four, five, right? One, two, three, okay. All right. So here we are back again, together again. Okay. So I'm getting a little punchy here.
You know, staying in front of a screen this long, I'll do that to you.
It's right. Sitting in this seat for all this time. Okay, so do I have a motion to certify closed?
I move that this committee of the Richmond City School Board direct its clerk to call for a roll call vote of the committee members, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution- were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the committee.
Again, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Burke, seconds? Okay.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
She doesn't seem to be here.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Sapini? Ms. Dura?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
You are now in open session. And so you need a motion to approve the religious exemption request in student matter 202101.
So move. Second.
I'm not even sure who that was.
I think that was Ms. Page and Mr. Barlow.
It was all of us.
I'm sorry, was who?
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. You ready for the vote?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby? Mr. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Sapini? Ms. Dura?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Then I hereby adjourn this meeting. Good night all. Sleep well. Stay safe.